Staff, wisdom and clarity. Help them to be open to opinions which differ from their own, seeking to achieve viable solutions without compromising their integrity or their principles. Shower them with strength, health and peace. Protect them and their families. Lighten the load of their responsibilities. Unify our nation and our community, Lord. Help us to have mutual respect and honor, working together in a way that will result in peace and prosperity, for your glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Councilman DeWitt, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? It would be my honor.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Present.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Here.
Councilman DeWitt?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Yeah.
Mixing it up, like it. Well, good morning, everybody. We are going to start with public comment on agenda items. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Look forward to your comments. Welcome. Nobody wants to be first, so, right over here, sir. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Mike Young. I'm with, I'm with the Plant-Based Diet dot org. We are the organizers of the Southwest Florida Veg Fest, which has been held here in the city for two, last two years. And we're scheduled and up for approval at this meeting for our next event, annual event, which is going to be February 16th, 2020, at Riverside Park. So I just want to introduce myself and find out if you all have any questions for me, knowing that I'm here. And, you know, we hope to be approved. We've had great success here in the city for the past two years. And, you know, we are an education nonprofit, hoping to educate on ultimately lifestyle is medicine and just taking control of your own health. That's our overall top level of our mission. So our event is free and open to the public.
Wonderful. This is a public, a comment portion, so it's really not a Q and A, but...
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Am I, am I a candidate for...
I don't know. I, I work with Jesus and he mentioned that I could show up to the meeting today.
No, and thank you so much. This is just a voice and opinion and we, I'm interacting, but normally it's not a dialogue. Welcome, we're glad you're here. And please, if you could make sure that we all have your contact information and some information about your organization, that would be great.
All right, great. Well, I'll be in the audience for when our, our item comes up on the...
And there's other alternatives during the meeting to speak as well.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Please make sure we have your information. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
For the record, Kathy McGrath. I see, Item A, the clog road closure for holiday in the park. I just want to remind everybody what a wonderful city-sponsored event that is. Everything lit up, Santa Claus, snow slide, train rides, just a real, real nice evening. And also to any merchants who are in downtown on Old 41, there is, the city sponsors, a holiday lighting contest, so please decorate and make everything bright and sparkly. And the judges will be riding around on the night before, on Monday, checking it out. And the only other thing I see under proclamations and presentations, the presentation for FPNL on the possible conversion, please, this is a very, I'm on a street lighting committee, this is a very important thing, so everybody listen. It's, it's positive. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kathy. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward. Good morning, John.
Good morning, Mayor, Honorable Counsel. It's so nice to see you all again and thank you for everything you guys do. My name is John Paino. I represent the Benita Springs Downtown Alliance and CTT Kayaks. I just wanted to support 6C, the bioreactor, it's in the second phase. I've had the opportunity this past week to meet with Chairman Hammond of the Lee County Council, or the Lee County Commission, and John Cassini with the Water Keepers, and also a representative from the marine industry. And the bioreactor was brought up as being an option for many municipalities. And Benita Springs was used as a poster child, so to speak, for what we should be doing to clean water. So I just want to say thank you to all of you.
Thank you, John. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none? We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
I'd like to pull D.
D, okay.
I don't want to speak to C, but I, but vote on it. I'm voting.
Okay. Do you, you don't want to pull it?
No.
Okay. Okay, so motion to approve everything other than Item D?
Move.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Item D, Councilwoman Carr?
I'd like to motion to approve, but not to co-sponsor. That the city does not co-sponsor.
How does that work, I guess? Maybe a little part of explanation? I'm, yeah.
What the difference? The...
Hi, Laura.
Because there was, there was no letter attached. It says, "If you request the city to co-sponsor, yes, please attach a letter." And I didn't get one, and so could you just let us know?
Sure, sure. For the record, Laura Taylor, Director of Communications. So the applicant did have a complete package. I'm not sure if it just didn't get attached to the somehow, when it was uploaded. They did submit and check all the boxes for co-sponsorship. And we've co-sponsored the event for the last few years, but, you know.
Okay.
We can also, I can supply that to you after the meeting if you'd like.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, thank you. So...
Motion to approve Item D?
Second.
And a second? Further discussion? Thank you, Laura, for your questions. Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
And Item C, Councilwoman Corumba?
I just want to, excuse me, to compliment the staff for executing this project and for helping, at least applying to get some grants so that we could move to the next phase. This is a very important effort by the city and it will be used not, hopefully not only by us, we'll get credit for it, that other parts of Florida and Southwest Florida will be able to use this mechanism to improve the water quality. So we should be very proud of the effort that's coming out of Benita Springs and we don't, we can't say we appreciate it enough, so...
Right. No, and I guess, what do you say, we're in violent agreement and Matt and the team and everybody and just, you know, not, not to say too much, but I think you're going to be seeing some, some further great things in the future.
Well, exactly.
With this, and I'm looking forward to it. So let's, thank you for your comments.
Cherish this.
Absolutely.
Cherish this moment. That's how we need it.
Absolutely. Great, okay, council member, anything else? Any other comments on any other item? Okay, we're going to move on to proclamations and presentations. If I could have Zonta, the Zonta team, please come forward, that would be great.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Should I stand over here?
No.
Yeah, you shouldn't be. See, that's a great thing. This is a proclamation on the city of Benita, from the city of Benita Springs, a proclamation for International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women, November 25th through December 10th, 2019. Whereas Zonta International has made a difference since 1919, Black Sox scandal, by the way, working around the world to improve the lives of women through global service and advocacy efforts to ensure the safety, education, healthcare and overall economic sufficiency of women throughout the world. And whereas the Zonta Club of Benita Springs Incorporated was chartered in 1994, is part of Zonta District 11, Area 6, Club 1482, and is celebrating 25 years of service to the Benita Springs Estero Community and 100 years old and international organization. Whereas Zonta, quote unquote, says, "Zonta says no to violence against women," end quote, is a Zonta International campaign to raise awareness of and increase actions to end violence against women and girls around the room. And whereas the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women, Human Rights Day, will be observed from November 25th to December 10th, 2019. And whereas the 16 Days of Activism Against Gender-Based Violence Campaign is a time to galvanize action to end violence against women and girls around the world, the international campaign organizat- or, originated, wow, threw me, originated from the First Women's Global Leader in, Leadership Institute coordinated by the Center for Women's Global Leadership in 1991. And whereas Zonta International's ongoing efforts to end violence against women and girls through the Zonta International Strategies to End Violence Against Women, Z-I-S-V-A-W program, and through Zonta's partnerships with the United Nations and its agencies, now therefore I, Peter Simmons, Mayor of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, encourage the citizens of Benita Springs to proudly wear orange ribbons to support this endeavor and declare November 25th through December 10th, 2019, Zonta Days in Benita Springs. Signed, Mayor Simmons, November 20th, 2019. And I'd love it if you would share a few words. Congratulations and thank you for all your amazing work.
So good evening or afternoon, morning. On behalf of our Zonta Club members, some of our sisters who are up here today, we are really pleased and proud and thank the council and the mayor for this honor to help and assist us with our campaign. We have an orange ribbon for each of you to wear. I've given those in my friendly little bag here, along with a brochure about our Zonta Club. Normally you'll see us at the Woman of the Year Dinner. Well, it's a dinner this year and it's going to be taking place April 22nd. But our club works really hard to support a variety of different women's and young girls' projects. Just recently, we collected 1,000 pounds of supplies, some of personal hygiene supplies for the Zonta Sisters in Bahamas. And thank God for Ann, Dr. Ann over there and her church, the Gulf Shore Church, who helped us deliver the supplies to the freightliner, to the Benita Chamber, who helped us use the room to coordinate all the supplies and the best moving and storage who helped us keep the supplies safe. So we do a lot. We do hope that you will mark April 22nd down as the Woman of the Year Dinner. We are moving it from a lunch to a dinner so we can invite our husbands and so forth. And it's going to be at Pelicans Nest Golf Club. But our women work hard and tonight is our grateful, thankful dinner. And it's something that we are going to be sharing, what we're thankful for and what we're grateful for. And really, we're grateful and thankful to the city of Benita Springs, to the community. So thank you. [applause]
Proud, you're wearing your ribbons?
We shall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
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 I think you were in for a luncheon last year. Could you give a picture of you on my...
Yeah.
I want to be...
Yeah.
Linda, nice to be here.
Counsel, would you like to join us?
Sure. Let me get my... Still working. Might have to go sideways. You hear me? If you spin and you get a little closer, it takes on less space. Fifteen yards from approaching. Is there not a tension ribbon? One more, wait, one more, no, one more. Thanks, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, man. Thanks.
Thanks, Trish. Will do.
Okay, I am moving on with proclamations and presentations, and thank you, Zonta, for all your amazing work. Thank you so much. Item B is a presentation by Eric Culling from Florida Power and Light, FPL, for con- conversion of FPL High Pressure Sodium Cobra Head Streetlights to LED lighting, and this is green sheet 1911357. Hello, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor. I'm Matt Feeny, Assistant City Manager. I thought I'd introduce Eric Culling from FPNL. This is an issue the Streetlight Committee, as had been mentioned earlier in public comment, has been looking at for the better part of two years. The reality is, the lighting industry is moving towards LED lights because of their efficiency with power consumption and the ability to deliver light in the right spot and not create light pollution. So we, we have 1,115 Cobra Head Lights in the city where the city pays the power bill through a tariff agreement with FPNL, but FPNL maintains the lights. And FPL has a pilot program that Eric will go into that would allow conversion of those lights and reduce the city's power bill by about $10,000 a year and provide a new, more reliable and honestly technologically modern lighting system for the city on our local streets and in our side streets. This does not account for the decorative streetlights that we have in the downtown or along US 41. So, Eric?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much for your time this morning. Wanted to just take a brief moment here to kind of provide some additional supporting information, as Matt had mentioned. Great, thank you. We've been working together with staff and the advisory council for a better part of the past two years. As Matt had mentioned, we, we did file a LED tariff with the Public Service Commission back in April of 2017. This is a new tariff which allowed us to convert our high-pressure sodium lights to LED, as well as allow us to move into some new lighting areas that the utility has not been in before, such as parking lots and downstream of customer meters. We currently have roughly half a million streetlights throughout our service territory. Again, the LT-1 pilot tariff gives us the ability to work with our customer base in order to potentially have customers select through a fairly robust catalog of LED fixtures, various options that are going to serve their city streets in the best way possible. One thing that is important to note regarding LED technology is that it's really no longer in its infancy. It's almost become a ubiquitous technology that's in everything from our vehicles to our phones to our TVs. So it's definitely, at this point in time, a fairly mature technology that I think everyone understands what the benefits are of, of the technology. This is an example, so far out of the half a million streetlights that we currently have, we've already converted upwards of 200,000 of the high-pressure sodium lights over to LED. And this here is a representative example that more than 40 cities throughout our service territory have, have already made the conversion since this pilot program was put together in 2017. Locally here on the West Coast, wanted to highlight some of the larger HOAs here right in the city of Benita Springs, such as Hunter's Ridge and Worthington. Also here, I've got a list of West Coast municipalities that have already completed conversion, such as City of Fort Myers, all of Sarasota County's special taxing districts, and City of LaBelle, for example. From a technology standpoint, I think this slide here really is kind of key, showing that even though a lot of times LED lighting is perceived as actually being a brighter light source, as you can see here on this picture, the lighting level is actually 61% less. What's happening is it's getting more uniform lighting onto the street surface where it's going to be required, which is then are perceived by the human eye as a brighter light source, but it's actually not nearly as bright. Again, this is showing some of the advantages also of LED, as Matt had mentioned. From a light pollution standpoint, LED lighting, again, is, is really designed to get lighting where it's meant to be, and that is on the roadway. These two examples here show the significant reduction in sky glow. Dark sky compliance is something that is talked about very frequently, is an important aspect of an environmental policy, and these two pictures here kind of represent that. And you've got a couple additional pictures showing the difference between a high-pressure sodium, which is currently what is in place compared to, to an LED. Something I really wanted to quickly illustrate as well is, this is actually a conversion that was completed on Benita Grand Drive. I think it's important to note here that, well, yes, the roadway is much better lit, it is not a obtrusive or, quote unquote, a stadium style of lighting. What, what we've worked with, with staff is to select the appropriate kind of industry-accepted replacements for the existing fixtures. So I wanted to kind of highlight here, you know, this, this area of Benita Grand that's already been converted. This is just a quick slide here from Virginia Tech Transportation Institute. Basically what this is illustrating is showing that from a visual acuity standpoint and distance detection, which safety, security is, is really the primarily goal of lighting, is that right around that 4,000 Kelvin, which is what we have worked with the advisory committee to select for the conversion, seems to kind of be, quote unquote, "the sweet spot of, of distance and visual acuity." Now, this last slide here is just an example, as I had said, under the tariff program, well, before, we kind of had a limited offering of just standard Cobra Head fixtures. Under the new LT-1 tariff, we have a wide variety of a fairly robust catalog of available fixtures that can be utilized for both roadway as well as some decorative applications. All right, that, that's the last slide. I didn't put the questions one.
Yeah?
I thank, thank you very much.
No, thank you very much. Great presentation. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Any questions or thoughts? Amy?
Well, hey, you answered all the questions that I had written down, because I was concerned about dark skies and I...
Yes.
And I see that you complied. And I was also concerned about the color because some of the experience that we've had in our own community is that certain people have that really white, bright thing, and then other people in our community has gone to what I guess is a warmer spectrum. So it's possible to get that look of efficiency and still have the aesthetic there. And I think you already answered the question, it sounds like a good program to me, so I'm happy.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the lighting committee for all their time and effort, and of course, thank Matt Feeny and staff for their great work. And I'd like to make a motion to move ahead, that we go forward.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second, and I guess my, my thought, and I'm sure of the answer, but obviously, I'm 99% sure of the answer, but alleviate any fears of any problems along the coastline with turtles and nesting and anything environmentally, if you could talk through that?
Yes, we actually, that is something that we have discussed with staff and recently here over the past about a month, we do have an FWC-approved amber turtle light, which can be utilized for any coastal applications with environmental concerns. That's absolutely an option.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else? There's been a motion and a second? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Great.
Great, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Keep up the great work. Okay, we're going to move on to Item 8A. As you know, we have a vacancy in District 4, so we need to elect a new deputy mayor. I brought this forward under green sheet 1911359. Counsel, what's, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to elect Councilman Fred Forbes.
Okay.
Nominate. Nominate.
Nominate Fred Forbes?
Yes.
Okay, is, and there's a second? Okay. I'd like to nominate Councilman Mike Gibson.
I'll second him. I'd second.
Okay. Any other nominees?
Well, could we hear if they're both interested?
I just want, sure, but I want to make sure there's any other nominees.
I'll tell you what.
Fred?
I think that Mike is a senior, next to you, ranking person. I'd like to withdraw, if that's permitted.
I'll withdraw.
Okay, and then let Mike have it, because I think it's fitting and appropriate.
Okay. Any other nominees?
I thank you for the nomination.
But, okay, no, absolutely. Absolutely, okay. So we have a motion for Councilman Mike Gibson and a second to be the next deputy mayor? Everybody hap- do we take a vote or take a roll call? Do we need a vote?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mike.
[applause]
Yeah. What do they say about the vice presidency? Item B is appoint a city council member to fill the unexpected term of the Lee County MPO for the city of Benita Springs. I brought this forward under green sheet 1911363, and I'd like to nominate Laura Carr for this position, if she's still interested.
Thank you, sir, I am.
Is there a second?
Question?
Yes.
Would, is she going to be the alternate and I'll be a representative, or will I continue as the alternate?
The current slate is that the city of Benita Springs is granted two seats on the MPO, and we also have an alternate position, so if one member can't be there, someone else from the council can appear. The mayor is one of the, is one of the two designated, as was Deputy Mayor O'Flynn, and then Councilman Forbes was the alternate. It is, so it's, the question is, the, the opening spot is for the actual representative, and so I think...
Yes.
The Councilman Forbes is asking, is he moving up or is...
And I'd like to elevate the alternate and, and put me as the alternate, okay? Elevate Councilman Forbes, Councilwoman Carr, and put me as the alternate?
So the, so the motion probably should be to have Councilman Forbes move into the, the position, nominate Laura Carr to fill the other position, and then have yourself...
Senior spot, Fred.
As the, as the...
And I'm the alternate, so that's where, right, as it ought to be. Okay.
The alternate usually, I get usually voted most of the time, because between you and O'Flynn, somebody wasn't always there.
No, I think there's a meeting this Friday, but I can't make that, so it does...
Bruce?
Is it?
There isn't a, there isn't a meeting on Friday.
Yeah, and I have a doctor...
That's okay, we'll get through it.
Okay.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, so whatever that motion needs to say, is the motion I'm making, is there a second? Yes, Greg?
I do have, I'll second for discussion. Just for procedurally, is the mayor the, not the alternate, but the, the representative by, by his position?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure it wasn't by procedure that...
Right, no, I appreciate that. Absolutely. Great question.
So there was a motion, but I didn't see...
There's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Amy?
No, just to clarify, you're going to be the alternate and Laura and Fred are going to be the official members.
Correct.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mike.
[applause]
Yeah. What do they say about the vice presidency? Item B is appoint a city council member to fill the unexpected term of the Lee County MPO for the city of Benita Springs. I brought this forward under green sheet 1911363, and I'd like to nominate Laura Carr for this position, if she's still interested. This is just a quick slide here from Virginia Tech Transportation Institute. Basically, what this is illustrating is showing that from a visual acuity standpoint and distance detection, which safety, security is really the primarily goal of lighting, is that right around that 4,000 Kelvin, which is what we have worked with the advisory committee to select for the conversion, seems to kind of be, quote-unquote, "the sweet spot of distance and visual acuity." Now, this last slide here is just an example. As I had said, under the tariff program, well, before, we kind of had a limited offering of just standard Cobra head fixtures. Under the new LT-1 tariff, we have a wide variety of a fairly robust catalog of available fixtures that can be utilized for both roadway as well as some decorative applications. That's the last slide. I didn't put the questions one.
Yeah?
Thank you very much.
No, thank you very much. Great presentation. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Any questions or thoughts? Amy?
Well, hey, you answered all the questions that I had written down because I was concerned about dark skies.
Yes.
And I see that you comply. And I was also concerned about the color because some of the experience that we've had in our own community is that certain people have that really white, bright thing, and then other people in our community has gone to what I guess is a warmer spectrum. So it's possible to get that look of efficiency and still have the aesthetic there. And I think you already answered the question. It sounds like a good program to me, so I'm happy.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the lighting committee for all their time and effort, and of course, thank Matt Feeney and staff for their great work. And I'd like to make a motion to move ahead, that we go forward.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second, and I guess my thought, and I'm sure of the answer, but obviously, I'm 99% sure of the answer, but alleviate any fears of any problems along the coastline with turtles and nesting and anything environmentally, if you could talk through that?
Yes, we actually, that is something that we have discussed with staff, and recently here over the past about a month, we do have an FWC-approved amber turtle light, which can be utilized for any coastal applications with environmental concerns. That's absolutely an option.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else? There's been a motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. Keep up the great work. Okay, we're going to move on to item 8A. As you know, we have a vacancy in District 4, so we need to elect a new deputy mayor. I brought this forward under Green Sheet 1911-359. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to elect Councilman Fred Forbes.
Okay.
Nominate.
Nominate Fred Forbes?
Yes.
Okay, and there's a second? Okay. I'd like to nominate Councilman Mike Gibson.
I'll second it. I'd second.
Any other nominees?
Well, could we hear if they're both interested?
I just want, sure, but I want to make sure there's any other nominees.
I'll tell you what.
Fred?
I think that Mike is a senior, next to you, ranking person. I'd like to withdraw, if that's permitted.
I'll withdraw.
Okay, and then let Mike have it because I think it's fitting and appropriate.
Okay. Any other nominees?
Thank you for the nomination.
But, okay, no, absolutely, absolutely, okay. So we have a motion for Councilman Mike Gibson and a second to be the next deputy mayor? Everybody, do we take a vote or take a roll call? Do we need a vote?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mike. Condolences. What do they say about the vice presidency? Item B is appoint a city council member to fill the unexpected term of the Lee County MPO for the city of Benita Springs. I brought this forward under Green Sheet 1911-363, and I'd like to nominate Laura Carr for this position, if she's still interested.
Thank you, sir, I am.
Is there a second?
Question?
Yes.
Is she going to be the alternate and I'll be a representative, or will I continue as the alternate?
The current slate is that the city of Benita Springs is granted two seats on the MPO, and we also have an alternate position, so if one member can't be there, someone else from the council can appear. The mayor is one of the two designated, as was Deputy Mayor O'Flynn, and then Councilman Forbes was the alternate. So the question is, the opening spot is for the actual representative, and so I think the Councilman Forbes is asking, is he moving up or is...
And I'd like to elevate the alternate and put me as the alternate, okay? Elevate Councilman Forbes, Councilwoman Carr, and put me as the alternate?
So the motion probably should be to have Councilman Forbes move into the position, nominate Laura Carr to fill the other position, and then have yourself...
Senior spot, Fred.
As the alternate.
And I'm the alternate, so that's right, as it ought to be. Okay.
The alternate, I get usually voted most of the time because between you and O'Flynn, somebody wasn't always there.
No, I think there's a meeting this Friday, but I can't make that, so...
First.
Is it...
There isn't a meeting on Friday.
Yeah, and I have a doctor...
That's okay, we'll get through it.
Okay.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, so whatever that motion needs to say, is the motion I'm making, is there a second? Yes, Greg?
I do have, I'll second for discussion. Just for procedurally, is the mayor the, not the alternate, but the representative by his position?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure it wasn't by procedure that...
Right, no, I appreciate that, absolutely. Great question.
So there was a motion, but I didn't see...
There's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion, Amy?
No, just to clarify, you're going to be the alternate, and Laura and Fred are going to be the official members.
Correct.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Congratulations, Councilwoman Carr, great job. Greg?
No, I said, and Fred.
And Fred, yeah. Great job, Fred. Item C, approve a letter of support for the Charlotte Harbor Flatwoods Initiative. I brought this forward, was approached by a few of their members. This is Green Sheet 1911-361. Does everybody see the letter?
I didn't get it.
Okay, can we make sure we have the letter?
Mayor, what you're referring to, no, we included the correspondence you received regarding the request.
Oh, okay.
Should council decide, should council choose to provide a letter...
As long as council's okay with me authorizing a letter in support, I guess that would be great.
So moved.
Okay. There's been a motion by Fred, seconded by Amy. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
No, I just don't know enough about it, so...
Mayor Simmons?
Aye, and I think actually Amy made the motion and Fred seconded it, so I think, okay. No, Greg did? Greg was in there? Okay.
Doesn't matter. Yeah, Greg made the motion.
All right, fantastic. Greg, thank you very much.
We'll take Greg.
Okay, thanks so much. Item D is addendum 2 with a green sheet and letter. Consider accepting a portion of Rosemary Creek ditch for maintenance from the Lee County School Board. This is Councilwoman Amy Corumba. Green sheet and backup materials are going to be provided, and I think they just came in. Thank you.
We discussed this last...
I started the discussion last time. I said I was approached, and I had a discussion with Matt, and he's really going to take over from here, but basically, there's a reason why we should be doing this, and he's going to explain why we're going to get the title transferred.
Wonderful.
And this is a picture of what we're doing here.
Great, thank you, Amy. Hey, Matt?
Hello, so I just handed out a map that shows the area. It is along the, it's bound by the interstate and Imperial Parkway. It's immediately east of Imperial Parkway, and it's a big ditch.
Do we have anything by any chance that can go up on the projector or no?
I...
That's okay, well...
It's essentially where the second 75 badge is on the map here, the one that's furthest to the north. So this ditch conveys water from east of the interstate on into Rosemary Creek, down where Island Park is in the Imperial River system. It's a major conveyance for water moving through the city, and the city maintains essentially all of it south of the area that the school board is asking to transfer. The school board's asking to transfer about 1,100 feet. We maintain on the map I handed out the area in green and actually beyond. It's important to keep it free of vegetation so that water can flow through there. It was an instrumental conveyance during the run-up to Irma, during Invest 92L, and then obviously afterwards. So we have an interest to make sure that it functions, and you know, the simplest way for that is to be directly responsible for the maintenance. You know, ideally, others would maintain it, but the school board has indicated this is, you know, something that they would like us to consider. It's really up to city council. Because we do maintain it, we know what the cost would be additionally per year. It's $17,500 to maintain that and keep it in a, you know, functional state, so that would be really what the school board's asking you. Typically, when we take ownership of things like this or take maintenance of it, we take the ownership because that's the cleanest way for us to deal with it. The school board has indicated they would do the ownership transfer, and that would occur most likely in January, their first or second meeting, so should council decide to move ahead with this, we would, you know, accept the property in January when they give us the documents, and then move to amend our mowing and spraying contract, probably bring a budget transfer back for the additional $17,500.
Fred or Amy, do you want to speak first or...
No, I think it's important, the way that was explained to what the situation here is that if we rely on the Lee County to do this, they'd have to have an isolated operator to come in, you know, and just do this one little piece, so the level of maintenance might not be what we would want, and we already know we have to take a pair of all this green part that's on the map, so I just think it's a continuation of a responsibility. We don't normally want to take over this kind of stuff, but it makes sense to me, so I move to follow up on it.
Okay, Fred?
I'll second it.
Okay, and there's been a motion and a second and for discussion. Fred and then Greg.
I'm in agreement with this, and I think the other thing is the school board isn't equipped to do this kind of maintenance correctly, but Greg Dewitt said something that, when this first came up, I think in exchange for this, they ought to agree to every year put $5,000, $6,000, maybe $8,000 towards landscaping, because that really, it doesn't fit in with the landscaping standards of the city by a country mile, and they're still coming out ahead, and that shouldn't bankrupt a board that's got billions of dollars to work with. I mean, if you can't find eight grand or nine or something a year, it would make it nicer looking for the whole community, everybody that looks at, including the students.
Okay.
That'd be my thought.
Yeah, no, thanks, Fred. Greg?
I got two thoughts here. First question is, according to the picture, Matt, if you go to the west side of Imperial Parkway, the actual ditch abutting the school, who's going to maintain that? Because it looks like it feeds into it.
It was not maintained for a very long period of time, and recently, if you were to drive by, it actually is pretty well-maintained. The school board, when they acquired the property, entered into an agreement with Lee County. It was part of their, I guess their property transfers is how they've described it. So they have Lee County DOT maintaining that portion. So they're maintaining it to the north and, you know, to where it crosses back underneath the interstate.
They is in Lee County?
Yes.
All right, my second question, maybe a third one, depending on it.
We'll give you four.
We'll take four. My question is, is, okay, BSU and us, and now let's go throw in Lee County, are the maintenance the same? Are we requiring the same amount of maintenance? Or is Lee County going to clog this up on the north side? And we're, and I guess that's my question, kind of like, how often is this maintenance going to be done compared, because you have BSU to the north, and it's only good is, you know, we're going to take this 1,100 feet, and if from 1,100 feet down to our area is nice and clean, but everything to the north is clogged up, do we have any say-so?
You know, we only use our relationships with those two organizations. We have good relationships with both Benita Springs Utilities and Lee County DOT, so I think, you know, I can't answer your, you know, you want absolute criterion, I can't answer that, but I think that we would be able to use our relationships to a successful outcome in terms of maintenance. Our $17,500 represents basically four mowing, spraying events a year, so it's, we're not talking about a manicured lawn here.
No, I understand that. And that leads me to the next question, and it kind of piggyback a little where I thought Fred was going to go, but more so, it's in our area, it's something we want to have maintained four times a year, why can't they just contract with us? We'll do the work, you pay us. I mean, the land's not going to be worth anything to us other than a ditch, and if we do have this relationship, we know that we've got some big bills coming up sooner or later. I know $17,000 is not the scheme of things, but you know, as the mayor puts, dollars turns into pennies, turns into dollars, turns into hundreds of dollars. Is that an option to say, look, we'll...
It limits your options down the road with use of the property. If you wanted to put a bioreactor or something along those lines, you don't own the property if you simple. So if the school board's willing to transfer it and the city council wants to consider it, it seems that the logical approach would be to take the property to give the city in the future more options for use of that property.
All right, then, I'll go...
When we're maintaining property, it's cleanest for the city to own the property as well, otherwise, we have people working on unknown property through agreements.
And I'll go one step further if I get my fourth question.
No, 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 this is a great conversation, absolutely.
And can, will school board, just because of nitrogen stuff, and maybe we don't want it, can we get the pond with it?
I don't think you want the pond.
Okay, I'm just asking, I mean, we're always looking for storage places.
You know, this is an ask. It's a $17,500 ask every year of the city.
Yeah.
And there's no way we can ask the county to chip in?
The county doesn't have responsibility for this.
I mean, I don't mind doing it, it's just, like you said, I mean...
The school board has so much money, why can't they chip in?
So Matt, how do we restructure this? And I hate, you know, use the word restructure, but...
My recommendation would be to take the property, if you're so inclined, and maintain it because of the, how much water's moving through there and the negative effects upstream. It also allows you in the future to be able to look, to gain some value should it avail itself in terms of water quality treatment.
Fred, maybe, does that sound okay? I mean, at the end of the day, we just want to get it done, but there are details to how to do it.
I think we need, not today, but at some point, we have to review our policy of compelling owners to do what their responsibility is for waters management, stormwater management. That's a...
What a novel concept.
Well, I mean, we need to have a conversation, and we did suggest that once we get this water modeling done, and we really understand how the interconnections are, that there might be some ordinances that need to be done to have some enforcement mechanisms. We don't have that, so unless and until we do, we just have to, we have to protect our people right now and our community. Nobody wants to add $17,000 to any budget or even $1,000, that's not necessary, but because this is so interconnected, it's not like a little ditch that only, you know, treats five houses. This is important to the community. I think we should go ahead because we're not at a point where we could start talking the other talk right now, because we haven't had that discussion at the council.
Okay, thanks, Amy. Greg and then Fred.
No, I just want to echo what Amy said. I mean, and I'm all for it, and I know we're going to get the land for it. I'd like to get, if you say the pond's not worth it, I mean, I think maybe for storage down the road or berm it, maybe, I don't know, if we can get it down the road. It just, I just, we brought up last meeting, we're bringing it up this meeting, what's going to stop any other HOA from coming and saying, hey, our ditches are all messed up, you guys take it over, we don't care, and, I mean, we're going to be so inclined to do it because it's what we need to do for the rest of the city. I just think we need some time in the future, you know, to hold the owner's feet to the fire, and if they got a contract with us, they got a contract with us, and I'll use the Lee County EMS. They stay at our fire stations, they get a bill every quarter for rent. It's the same concept. We're going to mow it every four times. Same thing with Tony and Neighborhood Services. They got to come out and mow my lawn, they're getting a bill on their taxes.
Fred and then Laura.
I still think that we ought to get some agreement that they will landscape that high school by $8,000 or $9,000 a year. That's, they're gaining $9,000 or roughly eight on us, so why can't they spend, take the other $8,000, that it's going to cost them anyway, and do it?
Matt, you're looking skeptical that we can get such an agreement.
What, landscaping or...
We're all kind of want a little something for this.
Yeah.
Then there's just no way, is it? Because we need to be practical.
I think, I don't object to our pursuing that line of thinking, but I think we should separate it right now. I'm all in favor of putting pressure on them to be a good citizen, which they're supposed to be in schools, all right? But I think this, we need to go forward with this, we're going to be the good citizen, and if they are not the good citizen in the future, then we'll know that, you know? But I, you know, I hate to, I hate to say this.
Dive in one you need to.
Quid pro quo.
Everything is...
So anyway, but I think we should, we should try to do it in the future, but I think, I am in favor of, let's, you know, let's vote, I'm going to vote in favor of it, and if you want, I'll go back to Chris Patrica and start the ball rolling there and see what the reaction is, and then we all can talk to all the people we know on the school board and go forward, and they can...
Well, yeah, and be clear with her.
I understand.
We've had enough.
Exactly.
And they just got their halfpenny raise.
Well, that's for something else, but...
If they can't manage money, we shouldn't come in to fill for them.
Yeah.
And I think the homeowners association is covered with our stormwater, the way we structured that, that they have, homeowners associations have to, or there are consequences. We'll do it, but liens or fines go up, so there's teeth...
We don't have that yet.
Well, up until the point that we get a four-and-a-half acre ditch off a polar road given to us, sure, up until that point.
Right, right. I was going to say, just coming back around, Greg, any other thoughts or Laura?
I'm all for it, and I just...
No, 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 seriously, anyone?
No, I don't know where that is.
Mike? Are we, is this final, we vote on it, or we're continuing discussions on taking this over?
I think if you were to vote on this today, that the school board would take that as the green light to transfer it to the city in January, so that would, this would adjudicate this issue if you voted on it today. That's what we were trying to get your thoughts and views on, one way or the other. Because, I mean, really, we're transferring $17,000 liability from them to us every year, so quid pro quo, I think we should get something for doing this, not do it for free, so...
Fred, thanks, Mike, no, that's...
First of all, history was recently that they almost shut down football over a $10,000 item, remember? And it actually got resolved by a member of the public donating $10,000 to pay that bill with the officials to keep the football season going. I think that it's more than fair to say, look, we'll do this, you're going to come out money ahead, but you, we want something writing, that you're going to landscape that thing at the tune of about $8,000 a year, and if they want, if they say, we don't know anything about where to plant it, let the tree advisory board, knows the school property was out there several times, because they actually planted trees, remember, out there? Let them, give them professional advice, because they're all arborists and all that for the most part. So I think, I think if we don't tie this in now, you aren't going to get it in the future.
I'd be in favor of tying it together. Saying yes.
But I'm in favor of doing this, I think it's a good thing to do, and I think putting a bioreactor possibly there is a good thing, so I'm in favor of it, I just...
So the original motion, I don't believe, includes the tie bar landscaping. Do we want to adjust that, or do you want to vote on the original motion?
I'll vote to amend it to that.
Okay. So we will approve, the motion, state your motion, please.
Well, my motion would be that we add to taking over the property and maintain it at the tune of what, approximately $17,500, $18,000 a year, that in exchange for that, the school board will agree that they'll spend, let's say, $8,000 a year for next five years, and then we can revisit the thing or something like that.
In landscaping?
Landscaping.
On the high school?
On the high school site, and that they would really coordinate with the tree committee to make sure they do it good.
Well, either tree committee or Stuart Smith or Community Development, they're the ones, I mean, they're the ones that have the standard.
Yeah, but they work, Community Development's got a member that sits in on the tree committee meetings, so it's...
Then in like three years, they then donate $8,000 to the city's bond of trees.
Whatever, yeah.
Matt, think you can pull it off?
I can't speak for the school board, I don't know.
Okay. So Fred, you made that motion, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
There's been a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Mike, I'm, whoops, time out. Mike?
That's an addendum to the, we're voting on...
Vote on the motion.
An amendment.
So we...
If there's an amendment, then you have to vote on the amendment.
But there was already a motion, wasn't there?
Yeah, but you can amend a motion.
Vote on the amendment, then you...
So this is the amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You guys are going to make me go upstairs and get the book, aren't you? Don't want me to go to the book.
I've got my little one.
Any further discussion, counsel? Any further discussion, council? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
No.
Councilman DeWitt?
No.
Okay, so what am I voting on?
On the amendment.
Which is what?
Councilman Forbes-
Adding the eight thousand dollars to the-
Oh, tying it together?
Tying it.
Requesting the quid pro quo.
Well, it is the time to joke when you're leveraged. But I believe, I've, in conversations, that we should kind of save our, what would it be, our pro for another quid? Another time. But, okay, so I'm going to vote no.
Mayor Simmons? Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Three, three, fails?
Aye.
Motion fails.
So now the original-
Now the original motion to not tie bar the funding.
Correct.
No quid pro quo.
Property move.
And I don't, did Amy, did you make that motion, I think, originally, and then Fred, you seconded that? Okay, on the original motion, is there further, there's been a motion and a second. Are you still going to second it?
Yeah, I'll second it, but I'll probably vote no, hoping it's a tie, so we can get something going here.
Well, just, just a question. If, if it's a tie again, then what happens?
Fails.
And then, can we bring it forward again?
Sure, you can bring it forward. I mean, the actual-
The person that's on the-
No side.
How do you do it?
Let, let's, let's see where it goes first, before we get into the, there's reconsiderations, and then there's, you know, there's other issues. Let, let's see where it goes first.
All right, let's vote.
There's been a motion?
Because also, the city, the, the school board has also asked us to plant trees, more trees. So we just say no when that comes up. And so we, we start, what, they have, or they're going to.
They are. They have?
Or they're going to. Maybe that's-
I haven't heard that.
I haven't heard that.
They're not subjected to our landscape code.
Amy, it's not that difficult, but can you please just restate your motion? Thank you.
I think the motion that we, that we pass the resolution to accept the ditch along seventy-five, that the school board is asking, we take over the property and we maintain it in the future for the highest quality stormwater management.
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second discussion. Great.
I just want a question. Matt, how, if we do this today, how soon can we get the property, and are we going to stay, start maintaining it? And in order to say that, I mean, this is going to be at least a couple of months, and we're getting, getting into rainy seasons before we know it. And if we don't maintain it, we're going to be in trouble.
Excuse me. They, from, from, they called me yesterday, I think, a phone call with them. The transfer, their work, you know, they, assuming this would go forward, the, the transfer work, which requires a little bit of survey work on their end. I think they were, they have two meetings in January. I don't know when their meetings are. But they, they said at one of those two meetings, I think they would be in a position to transfer the property.
And it's not going to cost us anything, transfer. We're not having any environmental impacts.
Quit, claim deed.
They're going to do that.
They would quit, claim deed, and they would be responsible for the survey work. That was in the letter they provided.
So, with that, you know, we already have a contractor, because we, we recently let that, that mowing contract. And when this came up, I said, it's not just a mowing contract. Can you give me a hard price? So I, I know what the cost is. It's seventeen thousand five hundred.
Well, we put the standard thing in there, that if there's any hazardous materials in there, they're responsible to clean it up, not us.
Sure. We, we can, you know, we, we can talk to them about that, but the intent was a quit, claim deed, and for them to transfer. Should you be in favor of this? With the contractor, to answer your question, we, we would be able to get on it and mow it probably, you know, whatever the next cycle is, at some point in January, February timeframe.
Thank you.
But, you know, we would wait until the transfer.
Sure. Mike?
And if we don't accept this, they're still liable for maintaining it.
Correct.
Correct.
But when they don't, we, our citizens take the hit.
Until their standard, not our standard, correct? Is what they're liable for?
Correct.
They don't do it, we have other, other than a-
It's another unfortunate situation, you know, it's, I don't have a great answer for that.
I think also, we understand the concern about the landscaping and a staff. We are more than willing to reach out to superintendent to set up a staff to staff meeting. If anyone from council wanted to act as a liaison with the school board, we could set up a meeting and discuss our standards of landscaping and, and discussion how we can be community partners together and create a program as well.
Okay.
So there's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
I'm in favor of it.
So, direction to staff would be-
Perhaps you want to have Mr. Feeney have a follow-up with that staff to staff meeting, and see if they can come up with an alternative.
Come up with option B.
And then bring it back to council.
Well, they can maintain it, and that's, that's an option. Is there a direction on what kind of landscaping you would like, a dollar amount, or location?
Yeah, I said they got to spend about eight grand a year, and I said five years. You know what? That, all they have to do is spend forty years, or forty thousand dollars over five years. And then there's, the money stops. I mean, that's, that's a tremendous deal, but-
Are you talking about the proposed-
They need to put trees and soften the view from the Imperial Parkway looking to school. It just looks like a big institution, not a, not a, not a school. I mean, it's not flattering at all.
Is that direction enough mattered?
Five thousand dollars over, I'm sorry, eight thousand dollars over five years specifically to soften the view along Imperial Parkway on the-
With trees, primarily trees.
High school proper site.
Native vegetation.
I think it should be stated in a way that it complies with the existing landscaping requirements of our, our community development regulations.
And I would say forty thousand would be light to comply, because there's a lot of footage on that frontage.
But what about the proposed transfer of property? What are we doing with that?
Failed.
I know, but, so you want that?
So we, we can approach them with this and say, you know, would it be fair to say, city council is willing to consider this transfer? Should, you know, an arrangement at the same time be articulated where you're willing to invest this amount of money in, in this specific landscaping?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty. Bring it back to us, buddy. Thank you. Okay, item nine, second readings and public hearings of the following ordinances, and public comment is allowed. Derek?
Hey, it's the second reading and public hearing on, in addition to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter Three Development Standards, creating a new section under Article Five, Division Two, the Benita Beach Road Design Standards. Chapter Four Zoning, Article Five, Division Eleven, creating a new subdivision establishing the Benita Beach Road corridor overlay. Amending Chapter Four Zoning, Article Five, Divisions Five, Six, Seven, and Eight, Use Tables, and amending Chapter Four Zoning, Article Three, Division One, Plan Developments, Providing for Complex of Law, Severability, Codification, Scrivener's, Scrivener's Errors, Inclusion in the Code, and Effectivity.
Got a typo, Rooney, somewhere?
I keep removing something. I keep getting put back in.
Checking, man. Hey, John, how you doing?
Good morning, Mayor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, this is not the first time you've seen this, so we are back again. As you can see on the green sheet, there have been three amendments that we have made since the last time this was presented to you, hopefully addressing those areas which we had discussed in the past. If you would like to go through and have another discussion, or discuss any of these particular items in detail, I would be happy to. Otherwise, I leave it in your capable hands for discussion.
The- Mike?
Last time we were here, we had more people from along Benita Beach Road, and they were asking for different developments that we've already approved within the last so many years, that it not apply to them. Where, where are we at with that?
We have gone through and provided additional language. If you will turn to page eleven. And in that section about applicability and exceptions, we have provided additional detail and clarification, so that those that are in know they're in, and those that are out know they are out.
And we've also provided a process by which someone who doesn't fit within there can make their case to the city council, a quasajustment process, that they're, that something unique to them authorizes them to have some, some waiver from those provisions. So I think, all in all, it catches all those people who have raised issues, and we have forwarded this around to some of those people.
Question, question.
Fred?
Is there anybody that you appro, that approached you wanting something, or to be excluded, or whatever, that you have not been able to work it out, so we know who the, what, what areas, or what development, or whatever?
There was, there was-
Odds with this?
There was one project, I don't know the name of the project, Mr. Dior's project, who, who would not fall within that thirty-six month prior to the adoption of this ordinance provision. I did not make that change, their project was forty months old from, and I did not make that change, because Mr. Dolmire had suggested a three-year backward look, and that's what the council had heard, so that's what we put in. But they were aware of the, of the change, so if they had an objection, they could show up today to-
And they could also file for relief under that section that Derek outlined. Also, I think that there's one property owner that will come up and speak about that, but that's a relatively new occurrence. And I think that they're pretty early in their process, so I can't, we'll listen to what they've got to say, and see where that shakes out.
Okay. Counsel?
Or, or could we push it to three and a half years, and that way it covers him, because he was here last time asking about it, so.
That, well-
It's up to you.
That is entirely up to you. I, we left it at three years simply because there is that ability to appeal, to be accepted, and-
But what does an appeal entail? I mean, it's extra expense to-
There is, if, if you were, if you were to grant the additional time, I'd say the one reason you might want to consider that is because we have been continuing this hearing for multiple months, and we're talking about a few months. Maybe it's just-
So we should put-
Forty-two months, or something like that.
Yeah.
What, what is the project that goes on?
Or could we just name it?
I don't know the name of the project, and-
That's just safer to just do the-
If you just want to go to an extended period of time, that-
Yeah.
We can make that change. That's not a problem.
That way, everybody that was here asking for it falls into it.
Okay.
I think forty-two months, if we're here in forty months, forty-two gives them that little leeway if something happens, or. Six more months, not going to make or break anything on the road.
Forty-two months is the current thinking?
Good.
Remember, it takes a month for this going to effect anyway, so.
Forty-one months.
Bureaucrat speed is a month? Is that what it is? Just checking.
Peel period.
Peel period, okay.
I move to accept, approve the ordinance.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please. So, I'm sorry, my apologies. Public comment, please. Members of the public that would like to speak. Hi, Neil, sorry about that. Welcome.
Good morning, Neil Montgomery for the record. I appreciate Councilman Gibson bringing up the question about ongoing existing developments, and I appreciate the fact that on page eleven, you did address the Horizon Project, which you've seen before. I did kind of want to bring an issue to your attention, and that is, in the commercial area, I'm not sure that you're, I'm, I'm assuming you would like to see Class A office. And Class A offices are often two stories. And if you look, you have the Fifth Third Bank, which is two stories, setback. Your two stories, setback. Bennet Card, two stories, setback. The Medical Cancer Building, two stories, setback. And so, if you want Class A office, it's going to want to be two stories, because it's typically not one story. And they're not going to want to be twenty or twenty-five feet off a major, commercial, noisy road. I know Astero tried that, and they have some office buildings right on Course Drew with that kind of a setback. I've been in that conference room. It's deafening, the road noise. So that's not conducive to an office. If it's retail or something, where you're in and out, you don't really mind. But if it's office, you're going to. So, I, I actually don't know what your vision is, but if your vision is to have more buildings like the Fifth Third Bank, like Bennet Card, I would ask you to kind of think about that, and allow the building to be setback, to avoid the road noise, and allow the two-story to have architectural features.
Great, thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing how I tried to short circuit it, I'm going to, anybody else that would like to speak? Any other members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none. Further discussion, council? Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn? Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
I'm going to go on the record and say Councilman O'Flynn would have voted aye, so. Seven zip, how's that? All right, just for old time's sake, seven zip. The band is back together, I love it. Okay, Derek, what's next, buddy?
An ordinance of the city, a second reading and public hearing on an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, amending the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapters Three Development Standards and Four Zoning, relating to development and construction, surface water management, and drainage. Amending Section Three dash one-three-six, additional required submittals. Amending Section Three dash one-nine-three, final inspection and certificate compliance. Amending Section Four dash two-two-two-four, clearing, grading, or filling of land, or land, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, and scrivener's errors, modifications that may arise from consideration of public hearing, and an effective date to stormwater development standards you've asked for.
Jack, welcome.
Good morning, mayor and city council. In July, engineering staff came to you to go ahead and get direction on implementing changes to our Chapter Three and Chapter Four standards for stormwater drainage. We have prepared those for you. We do have PowerPoint, oh, sorry. It does include requiring as-belt drawings. It does require ICPR modeling. And it also requires single-family drainage standards for residential building permits. It did go to first reading to you two weeks ago. It also was presented to LPA last week. We did obtain some feedback on it relative to concerns about what it could incur to the building industry. But overall, they did think it was an added benefit to implement our goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. I do have engineering staff here, if you would like some more information.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Did you say that the LPA didn't have any recommend, it says in here that there were recommendations. I didn't-
They had, they were concerned about the costs on requiring additional engineering drawings at time of building permit. So it would be an increase in cost that's not required right now, so there was concerns about that. But otherwise, there were, and we didn't also have a full quorum, but other members did value what the city was trying to achieve in terms of infill housing, and did think it was a needed attribute to our building permit process.
Counsel? Fred, did you have something? No? Mike?
Do, do we have an idea of what the additional cost would be? Because, I mean, it specifically mentions single-family, you know, for the infill. But I mean, what, what kind of costs are we adding to this?
I do not know that answer for you, and I don't believe our staff has done the research to provide an answer for you as well. But we, we could do that if that's council's pleasure, and continue it. But there are definitely other jurisdictions in the area that do require similar requirements at time of building permit. The city of Naples does, Collier County, and again, staff has done some other research of other areas.
Is this just requiring it early, or are they required to do it later, and we're just asking for it earlier, or?
Under our current codes, it is not required. I mean, we do require lot drainage plans, but it's not required to be done by a registered engineer. So when you do that, and you do solicit a professional that magnitude, typically the cost associated with those drawings does incur, because it's a different level of profession. We do have right now in the field, some contractors that are preparing those plans, and we're running into some challenges in the field. So, we think it's appropriate to have an actual licensed professional assist in that. And again, we, we do have Tricia Goff that can provide you some more information on why we think it's an enhancement to the building permit process to have professional licensed drawings. Just because the grade changes, I mean, we're talking to some instances, you know, a transition of eight feet.
Could we hear that information, please? Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello.
Mayor, mayor and council, today we bring you the proposed language to amend the Land Development Code, our Chapter Four, Four dash two-two-four, which addresses the single-family drainage.
I was going to say, is the mic on or off? I apologize, and I normally don't-
Can you hear me? No?
Yeah. There we go. I guess it is on. Thank you.
Sorry about that. In short, what Jackie was indicating, the city would be requiring the applicants to submit the engineered drainage plans, showing how the site will drain. The plan must show the design elements needed to achieve proper retention and drainage of the site. Items such as proposed and existing elevations, cross-sections, gutters, downspouts, yard drains, drainage arrows, retaining walls, French drains, just to name a few. Prior to the building or structure being issued, a CO being issued, or a CC, certification must be provided by the professional engineer. So we would put the onus on the owner and the engineer to provide that, so that we know that the drainage plan was done, or the, the site was per the drainage plan. And I do have a couple, let me see. So obviously, I just wanted to provide some of the challenges we have. This is a classic case of not having the proper erosion control on the site, and not having an engineered drainage plan. I just wanted to show you some of the issues we are facing out in the field, and we do get numerous complaints. Having the required drainage plan by a professional engineer, and having, in some cases, calculations provided, and some of the drainage solutions, such as what I mentioned before, would help in these cases and alleviate where it would take less city staff time, and again, put the onus on the owner and the engineer to make, make sure the site is being maintained. This is a huge elevation difference. You can see, the home on the left is older, and the, and the one on the right is definitely a huge elevation difference. And so we definitely have to be creative out in the field when we have these situations that occur. And so, we definitely have to be creative out in the field when we have these situations that occur. So, having, again, the engineered plans coming through would prevent this from occurring.
I make a motion to approve.
This is just another one mangroves being disturbed, so...
Makes good neighbors, too.
Yeah. It just helps overall, and it...
It's an overall protection to the existing housing stock as well as the the actual homeowner who will take over the purchase of that home. They'll know that it's been engineered.
There's been a motion to approve and a second. Is there further discussion, counsel? Okay, and now, members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward at this time. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's William Glass. I'm an architect. Live in Astero. I'm on the Astero DRB. I appreciate you letting an interloper come speak to you this morning.
Welcome with open arms.
I found out sort of through the grapevine that this was going on, and I wanted to comment on the basis of being a licensed architect in the state of Florida. All due respect to Jay and his staff, they do a great job. But the site drainage requirements of late, the last year, have been going up and up and up and up and up, and nobody really knows what the ground rules are. If we knew what the ground rules were, we can meet the ground rules. I'm a licensed professional. I think stating that you have to have a civil engineer on a site on every residential project is nigh on to swatting a fly with a sledgehammer. When you're in mangrove situations like this in wet property, absolutely appropriate. If you have more than forty percent site coverage, probably appropriate. That's what Collier does. But to say that every residential property has to have a civil engineering study done on it is overkill, in my humble opinion. I think if the... There are a lot of things happening in this marketplace right now that people don't know about. I present plans to many different jurisdictions around the area. Marco Island only takes electronic submittals. They will not take paper submittals. Benita will only take paper submittals and won't take electronic submittals. The communication between Jay's group and the Beniti Utilities sometimes is sketchy, in my humble opinion, and with all due deference, staff. It's not really our job or the applicant's job to do the communication between Beniti Utilities and the Building Review Department. That should happen in-house. Inter-office communication, smoke signals. If it were electronic, it would be a lot easier. You could take a building application, bing, it's at Utilities, bing, you get a response back. But I think there are a lot of things that could be done here. What I don't want to do is see the cost of intro housing, affordable housing, be burdened by civil engineers that get involved in projects. The other thing selfishly for me is I know it's going to happen. The developers are going to go to the civiles and say, "Well, we got to have you involved, so why don't you do the building?" So, you're going to push architects further and further away from the building process. And what you're going to end up with is, boy, that's an ugly building, but it really drains nicely. Thank you.
So, but could I just ask one question, sir? A follow-up? Just a follow-up.
I'm deep.
You said that Collier did it when their forty percent... What was it?
Well, they have... Different jurisdictions have different ways of doing it. It seems like on these infill sites, they're getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And in Collier, when you're down in Bay Shore, if you're covering more than forty percent of the building area, they require a civil to do the drainage plan. And that's fine. I mean, in a lot of cases, it's not necessary, but that's what they require. I'm not suggesting that's the way to do it. But there are different ways to do it. Just to say blanketly, every infill site in Benita is going to have a civil engineer involved is a little... A little over the top.
Affordable building and a resident...
Yeah. I mean, the rules are eighteen inches above crown of street or femal plus one, whichever's higher. That's a slab elevation, and you've got to have positive drainage. You can't drain on your neighbors, and there are various ways of accomplishing that. It's not rocket science. But to say you only need civil engineers, what's going to happen? The architects are going to get pushed out of the housing business. And of late, I've been... I've had rejections on some of these tight infill sites. And the letter that we get states da-da-da-da-da-da-da. And really, what they wanted was, they wanted dimensions on the drainage plan, on the sections, to show lateral dimensions and target elevations on the building. Target elevations on the building are absolutely immaterial. They mean nothing if you're on a stem wall building. As long as the drainage is positive away from the building, you've accomplished the feat, okay? It's the site drainage that's the issue. And the dimensions on the... That were required on the setbacks were on the site plan, which was nine inches away on the same sheet. And if you all know anything about drafting convention, you don't put the same dimension on two drawings because if you change one, you'll have a conflict with the other one. So, I'm voicing a frustration, but I think it's all... This is all going in the right direction. I just think it's maybe gone past the mark.
Okay. Thank you, Laura. Fred?
I think the one point that he made that makes sense is we add into this ordinance or proposal that if the building is not going to, including all patios, walks, drives, and all that, if the hard surface is not more than forty percent, you don't have to do this with a civil engineer. But I... We have an abundance of small lots, and we did fare far worse in the Great Irma Flood than Collier County did and other areas of the state. So, I think it's... We need to do more, but I think that point is good.
Okay.
And I am an architect.
Good man.
I'm also an engineer, too, in Ohio.
You're both. You're conflicting.
Yeah, so I argue with myself.
Those are Ohio credentials, so...
Oh, Ohio.
Different in Ohio. Things different.
Thank you.
A lot of runs uphill there towards Ann Arbor, right?
That's right.
Yes, Amy.
Well, I think, two points is I think what's more important than the coverage is the difference in elevation. But this is definitely something that the staff should address. There might be a mechanism by which, if there is such a thing, just a conventional building situation where the staff doesn't feel they need a professional... If there is such a thing as a routine kind of thing. But honestly, I think it'd be better to err on the side of being more stringent because we are confronted many... We've been confronted several times already with these problems that arise because of the building, the infill building, and this is why it's here.
Mayor and counsel, you do have a history of issues with the infill housing, and this is what brought it forward, the original request from staff to bring this forward. We do have a suggested amendment if you'd like to include architects in the... Not just engineers, include licensed architects as well. That could be an option. If you want us to look further into the reduction, I think there was some concerns from staff because we are trying to address a concern that we have going on existing.
And the reasons that were given, you know, are extreme reasons, and definitely, I can see the need for that, extreme elevation changes right up against the mangroves. But I think if it's like a like-building situation where the houses on each side of you are within, you know, basically at the same grade that you're going to be doing or very close, is it really necessary to go this extra step?
John? Oh, sorry.
Any... Team?
I understand your concern, but sometimes with our setbacks, you know, you have five feet, and sometimes you only have ten feet between houses, and that's even sometimes with your roof overhang, so you don't have a whole lot of drainage. Obviously, with the newer communities, the ones with the development orders, for instance, Benita National and Benita Lakes, you might not have those issues. But where you're having elevation changes and not having a whole lot of room to move the drainage, I want to make sure that the drainage is going in the right direction or being retained. So, sometimes with the setback requirements that we have, they're allowed to go very close to the other home. So, sometimes having...
But what if it was a larger lot? You know, can we put a stipulation on that? If the setback is so far, things like that, that would not require them to go the extra step?
And the elevation being...
Yeah, the elevation changes, setbacks.
And I would propose you do the forty percent and then also put in... Or if you have a setback of side yard setback, for example, of less than ten feet, whatever is reasonable, put both in there, and you've got it covered, I think. That would exempt a lot, but also put the net around the ones that are the problems.
Thanks, Fred. Amy?
I'm still concerned about differences in elevation. I think the staff needs to advise us on how we could narrow it. I think that the consensus of the council is that we would like to narrow it so not... So, routine things are not captured in this. Is there some suggestions that come from you?
We do have exceptions. If you do look at four dash two-two-four C, there are some exceptions. Obviously, it does not include, though, the whole house. It talks about your limit of square footage and how close you are to the property line. So, we do have some exceptions, not on just a single family. But if that is something you would like us to look into, we can definitely... I don't know if you want to say anything about the lot coverage.
For the record, Jacqueline Dinson, the concern with the lot coverage is the way the zoning code defines lot coverage. It's for essentially the building that's under impervious roof cover. So, it's not going to capture your driveways. It's not going to capture a lanai with a screen enclosure on top of it. So, in most cases, if we want to then term it as impervious coverage, then we're going to capture a lot more. So, just to go ahead and add that to the discussion. And again, if the council would like for us to include other professionals, we can, or if we want to include a waiver process or extend our exceptions, we can do that. But again, we're coming to you because of what we've encountered in the field, the complaints we've received from the community.
Greg?
I've just got a couple of questions or comments. I guess the first one is, I think it was stated before that you can't put your water on someone else. If that ordinance is already there, you have to take care of your own thing. The other question I have, the pictures you guys shown were all of...
Unless you're down river from the Kissimmee River, right?
But all the pictures we've shown were all of pre-construction or during construction. What's it look like afterwards? When those ordinances are put in there that you have to maintain your own water? I know in my house, I had to put in, you know, a pipe outback and this and that. That, I mean, I think those ordinances are already there. Are we going over and above that? Why are we have to have a professional engineer if that's the ordinance? Can't we stop that without a professional engineer or having it done?
So, just to speak in reference to the pictures that were shown, that was us going out because there was complaints or there was problems when one of our inspectors went out there, they saw, oh, well, this doesn't look like maybe...
Right, but it's not the final grade. The final grade doesn't come till the very end, and that's when all the... That's when it should be the final grade and at the right slope with whatever drainage, whatever guttering's up that is required. I mean, I think everybody wants to be good neighbors, but...
Yeah, and gutters are not required right now. I think, I don't want to misquote, but with the Florida Building Code, if you're under a certain roof overhang, then they're required, but we do not require them as...
Or if you're in a septic, it's got to be in front of the septic or in your garage. I mean, I know.
But this is us going out because of a problem.
I understand it's a problem, but all those were pre-construction. If we went back to those right now...
I think part of...
What's the finished product look like, is my question.
I think part of the problem is even when you... Because this is a consistent issue in almost every community where you have... Maybe you have a homeowner who's lived there for many years, never had a flooding issue. Now, there's new homes built, and they're having flooding in their house. And they're trying to, you know, they're coming to the city saying, "It's these other houses." Maybe it is the other houses. Maybe it's not. We have regulations which are... Tried to create a catch-all that says that if you do this and this and this, we're going to assume you're not going to be flooding your neighbor, and you have an obligation not to flood your neighbor. This process would have someone with signed and sealed plans saying, "No, we've looked at this specific project, and we've designed it, so it will not cause that problem." So, then we can exclude that as one of the potential causes of these flooding. I think that's part of the problem is once they're built, even if they follow the rules, it's hard for anyone to prove what happens.
Once they're built, it becomes a problem for the Public Works Department and has.
Yeah, in addition...
Amy and then Fred. I'm sorry, Fred. Amy?
I'm somewhat involved with this because I've had several issues with my constituents, and it's not even with small setbacks. It's in large property areas where flooding could occur. This one example was the flooding occurred on someone's septic system, which was, you know, three hundred feet away from their house. And it turned out that I don't believe they had an official engineer do it, and it wasn't executed even in the way that it was planned. So, there are all kinds of problems here. So, I think what's... It is difficult to have a blanket regulation to handle all instances. But I think the danger of allowing these kinds of things to happen in our community is really a problem and that we shouldn't... I know the cost. We're always worried about the cost. And if there is... I really rely back on the staff again to see if they could come up with some kind of a process by which, if there really is such a thing as a routine building and infill, then we could eliminate them from this requirement. I'm in favor of putting the architect in there, but I do think that we need a professional to help us with this because it's... Each instance is individual. So, how do you do a blanket regulation without looking at them on a case-by-case basis? This is the problem here, but I don't think we should water it down. I think it's a mistake.
Fred?
Well, and this doesn't... This has happened in the past. Ben Hertzson is well aware of it. There were a group of homes built, and they didn't build the finished floor elevation to what it was supposed to be. They didn't do the grading plan the way it was supposed to be. And it was one big mess, and really, you can have a bigger mess on a single-family home because there you have less professionals. Like, elevations aren't checked typically, unfortunately, on a lot of single-family homes. And then, once it gets built, it's built, and then if it doesn't work and we have a little flood and the neighbors get flooded, then everybody's at odds, including the poor guy that built the house. It was only wrote the check, and the workers didn't follow the plans. So, I think... I think that I do think we need to look at some of these exceptions to make it a little easier, you know?
Amy, or anybody? Any other comments? Greg?
I guess at the end of the day, if it is certified by an engineer, can they be held liable if you're flooding the next-door neighbor?
Yep. The answer is yes, they can. The engineer prepares, signs, and seals plans. They get reviewed and approved by staff and permitting, and then there's an inspection process that... A catch-all towards the end. As Fred said, we send someone out there to make sure it was done correctly. But the engineer has to certify that it was.
Okay, and if it's done correctly and it still floods?
Engineer can get sued.
Can. Can, correct?
Can, but I doubt if that would happen.
So, what would happen, I guess, not to pile... What would the...
You just added costs to somebody that they have no remedy.
Right.
Okay, the infill lots... Well, let me just take one step back and say that during the development order process, when we do a subdivision, an engineer is involved in the development order and usually sets up a general plan for how water would drain on a typical lot. So, those are relatively easy during the residential permit process to make sure that it's consistent with the development order. As Tricia was indicating, the infill lots that, over the years, has the requirement to put the finished floor up higher has presented a problem and drainage challenges that need to be addressed. They need to be addressed before the house is built and addressed in a way that... And let me just take a step back. Without this ordinance, we've had so many cases where a problem exists during construction. We have to go out and work with the builder to come up with a solution to that drainage problem where, with this ordinance, the problem would be addressed on a permitted plan before the construction starts. Costs, yes, there's a little cost associated with this for the builder out front, but during construction with this engineered permitted plan, there'll be fewer problems, and the builder will save time because he'll get his house done right the first time and sooner and be able to CO the house sooner, which time is money to the builder.
So, let me add, because when you're trying to formulate an answer here to this issue, you know, I think Councilman Forbes is raising a good point, which is in Florida law, including the Florida Building Code, recognizes this. They've sort of venerated the single-family home, the homestead, you know, the idea that... the single-family home, the homestead, you know, the idea that you can, owner builder can build their own. So there are a lot of professionals who are normally kept out of the process in a single-family home project that would not be any project that's a master plan subdivision. So for instance, if a developer subdivides and if this is what the drainage will be on, and has an engineer subdivide on a typical lot, but he's not the builder of the homes, and those homes are atypical or they, they deviate, there can be all sorts of issues. So I think there, there is a concern, I think it's been addressed to a degree, that there will be additional costs on that, that homeowner and the ultimate, the builder and then transferred the homeowner to build that lot. The issue, other side of it is that there are, if some of these checks aren't, aren't made, you, you risk maximizing the potential externalities on both the neighbors and the city, which is, that is, the city's, then has to deal with flooding and make improvements for a project they didn't build. And so I think, I think when you're trying to figure out what the answer is to give staff to make these changes, I think those are the, those are the two balancing factors you gotta, you gotta look at.
Is it possible for staff, when somebody submits a permit to build, that you say, this, we want to see what an engineer says you need and require?
Lay it on us, John. Bottom line.
If you want to provide specific standards for when a licensed professional is involved and when a licensed professional is not involved, that's fine. We can work with those standards. What I really want to be careful of and avoid is a general decision that is not based upon specific guidelines. So if you state, you know, those that have development orders or those that are a certain size, I can work with that. I'm not going to say that that solves the problem, you're not going to have issues for those properties. But I just don't, I really want to avoid kind of a nebulous type of description as to when we require and when we don't.
You want to sub, objective, not subjective?
You don't want it-
Correct.
Discretionary on the staff-
Right.
Correct.
But you, you guys are the experts, so could you tell us what could be taken out? Or come back to us with, you know, those guidelines?
Like we say to our children, don't make us ask you the right questions, just tell us what we need to know.
The, the question that we're answering is actually a very big one. And I know that the way that it's been described sounds orderly and somewhat productive, but I can tell you that the problem is that there is no standard, there is no-
Let's just stop there a second though, right, John? So you're, there's no standard?
The standard that we have in the code, we're two different things. I'm saying there's no standard-type development and there's no specific standard that we have. It basically says, you've got to provide a drainage plan and you can't hurt your neighbor. There's not a lot of information in there to go off of. So I think when Mr. Glass came up and he was talking about his comments, there's a lot of frustration on both sides of the fence right now because we are trying to make sure that that drainage occurs, and if you're a design professional, you don't have a specific standard to design to. So what we are looking for and what's been brought to you is at least our opinion as to what that specific standard should be. That, on the good side, presents a level playing field and a defined playing field for everyone to understand. It does create additional work. I know that there was discussion on what, what professionals should be allowed to put these together. If you want to include architects to the greatest extent that their license can be applied, I don't have a problem with that. But I think that the trick here is that you want to have a better standard. You have older neighborhoods and you have infill development, even in newer neighborhoods, that is very difficult to handle. And even with properties are not that, there's not a great difference in, in finished floor elevation between adjacent residential properties does not mean there's not going to be a drainage problem there. They could be in communities where there is no drainage system, they could be in communities that are naturally attract water. We've had problems with drainage in San Carlos Estates. Those are the largest lots you have in the city. So lot size doesn't matter. This is really a situation where this city really needs to focus on how we handle and move our water. And this is one of the ways we're looking to address that. So I understand that there's some concerns. I also understand that anytime there's change, there's a little bit of reluctance because it's a new process. Our goal is not to make home building difficult, our goal is to make home building function. So in this respect, if we need to come back, if we learn a few lessons from this, assuming this council adopts this plan, we're happy to do it. There's really no pride of authorship and there's no statement that this is the only way to make it happen. But you do have a situation we're recommending that you address, and that's why this was proposed to you.
Matt, do you have anything to add?
No, I would just echo kind of what, what Derek said and I said before. If you, if you don't have the standards that, that community development is, is looking for, what ultimately happens is lots that unfortunately served as de facto drainage structures, when they get improved, that capacity's taken away, and the homeowners ultimately come to the Public Works Department if it's on a city street and look for an improvement project. And those improvement projects, because it is a built environment and it is infill development, can be very difficult to try and, and even be able to address the issue, and they can be quite expensive as well. So we, we experience, we've experienced at least two, to my knowledge, in the last year that were really directly attributable to this issue. One was on Goodwin Street, I'm sure Councilman Gibson's familiar with that, and, and we were fortunate to be able to, to move the water and address the issue. And we, it just becomes very challenging. So if it can be addressed ahead with the home being built in a way that doesn't create that condition, it, it makes for a better community.
And, and so the effect of this, north, south, east and west, parts of this town, closer to the beach, further out west-
All over the place.
Out east, understood.
Okay, well, my, my main concern was thinking of like San Carlos Estates with huge lots, you know, I didn't think it would be a huge effect on the neighbors, but i- if it is, I guess I'm fine with it, but I, I guess I would like to add the architects as long as their license allows it, so.
Second?
Yeah, that would be fine.
With the architect?
There's been a motion to approve in a second, and I just want to drill down here just a little bit further. I mean, what, John, at the end of the day, in terms of the environment, how is this going to help? The water, drainage?
This really gets down to a micro level when it comes to drainage, and it gets to a very personal level because it deals with people's houses. When, when a business floods or there's, there's an issue with, with water on a commercial property, you can still go back to your house. When your neighbor builds a house and now all of a sudden there's water in your, in your garage or threatening your property, it's a much different story. And so in this case, we're looking to, to avoid those. And this isn't something that we just thought of and wanted to bring forward. This is something what we've seen over the past 12 years. And because infill development is now starting, I think the statement was made earlier, is starting to get on smaller and smaller lots, and that's true, but it's also going in a lot of older existing lots. And with standards changing for elevation, FEMA requirements and MAPs under constant review, we have a situation where houses, the elevation between houses is starting to get very difficult to handle. And even those where it's not, we're getting to the point where we're built out enough where it's still an issue that we have to address. And so how does this affect us? Hopefully it keeps everybody dry. That's the goal. And if it doesn't, like I said, if we miss something or we've gone too far, we haven't gone far enough, we're happy to come back with amendments.
And we added the amendment with architects, right? Fred, do you have, thank you, John.
I, I'll make this comment. Generally speaking, this is not something that architects are really always skilled at. It varies on who the architect is.
Especially in a-
The engineer that you're talking about is skilled at that level. I, I would offer, I, I, I'm not sure that that's a wise decision you're making.
To add architects?
Only because there's a big variation between the skill levels of different arch-
Fred, would it be an architect with a certain degree or a certain certification?
No, there's no-
No, it's not like an, you know, you have a JRS doctorate, but they specialize in taxation? You know, they have that LLM or what, I mean, is it a different certification?
It's way different.
The, the extent that their license covers. That way, you're not giving an architect the authority or ability to do work outside of what the state has authorized them.
Yeah.
And can we put a clause that says you could petition for an exception and have somebody convince your office that an engineer's not-
Yeah.
And no disrespect to the architects, but put the onus on the architect that may not have the certification or the specialty.
To make the argument?
That's fine, but the person generally that makes the argument would be an architect or engineer, so I don't, I mean-
Then you could say they make, it makes sense, so we're not taking that sledgehammer.
We're drilling down, Fred, what do you want? You're the architect.
No, I want to hear what-
No, it's, it's fine. It, I know you've got some public comment, all I would simply state is that those that would make the argument to be accepted would generally be those that would be doing the work, so.
Sir, love your thoughts, please.
Thank you for the second round. I've been doing this 45 years. There is no classification for architects doing this or doing that. As there is no classification for, when you have a PE after your name, you could be an acoustical engineer stamping structural drawings and it doesn't make any difference. So I agree with you, it's, that's not where we want to go. I've had a suggestion, instead of coming up and complaining, I like to come up with ideas of my work. You all are very concerned about the ultimate product working. When you walk away from a site, you give somebody a CO, it's not going to drain the neighbor. I have to beat up on the developers I work with and the builders to get me surveys that have spots along the property lines on both sides of the property. They don't want to do that, it's extra money, it's a hundred bucks, they're not going to kill anybody. If you do that in the beginning, and then you have a building plan that has grades on it, and then you require a surveyor to go back at the end and do an as-built of the property, you're done. But to get an engineer involved in all this, I think is overkill. I mean, if you want the after-the-fact assurance, because what, what may happen is you may get a CO on a property with a, an earthen dam along the property line to keep the water in, and somebody goes in and plants plants and breaks it, and it floods the neighbor and all of a sudden we got lawsuits flying. So it's really important that buyers, owners know that they're, they're there for a reason and that you get an as-built survey after the fact so that you know if something happens two, three years down the road, you can go back and say, well, when the building was built, we gave it a CO, it was right.
Thank you. Thank you, Fred?
That's a potential solution, yeah.
Okay, now I apologize. Fred, you made the motion? Who made the motion? Amy, you know, not, not to belabor it, but with that-
With the, with the architect in there.
Well, with what he just recommended.
With both the as-built and the architect.
I'd like to hear the staff react to the-
Yes, yes, very good, thank you, Amy.
Because I think part of the problem, the way I see it, is that after the fact is too late. We need it before we build the stuff, all right? So, but now tell me, explain what he just said again.
So since I am a licensed surveyor, I, I will address the surveying comments. And, and that is, there are a lot of cities on the East Coast that require a survey with elevations, and they require elevations to go anywhere between five and 25 feet off the property or up to the next structure so that when the engineers are reviewing drainage plans, they can see the effect that it's, they're going to have. You know, so they know what the structural elevations and so forth are. That's very, very common. Wellington does it, Boca Raton does it, I know that for a fact. All of them require a drainage plan to be submitted. And different jurisdictions have different standards, some of them are architects, some have engineers, some are surveyors. But all of them at the end require an as-built survey to certify that it was built in compliance, substantial compliance with the plan. And, and that's just something that the builders work into their costs, they, they go to the surveyor, they, they make a deal with him. Simply put, he's going to stake the house out, he's going to give a survey for the lot anyway, he's already on the site. But that, that as-built generally occurs at the same time we worry about cost, when the surveyor does the final for the bank for the mortgage. So it's, it's not a huge additional cost, it might be a couple hundred bucks or something, it's not a huge cost. But that as-built submitted to the city, and some cities even attach it to the flood certificate, so they used to, before they came up with the new flood certificate forms, that would show exactly how things were built. And so that there was a record, so if when the owner, or the third owner later on, went back there and filled in the backyard that had a little swell in it and put a patio out there without a permit, there was a record of it and they can go back and know you have to redesign this to accommodate your water or put it back to the way it was. But that, that's the way it's done in most jurisdictions on the East Coast.
And we don't do that?
We do, we do not have a requirement to that. As a matter of fact, when the city originally incorporated and took Lee County's rules, they didn't even require a survey to get a building permit originally. And some of the problems we've had in the past is that we've had houses come in and find out they're two feet into the setback because a survey was never required. We recently had the vacation of an easement that the house had been in for 30 years that they found out after it had already been constructed, and that was back when Lee County, they didn't even require a survey. They let the builders say, yeah, there's some pins here, we'll pull a string. Most jurisdictions, and we do now, we require a spot survey to make sure it's on, you know, not only the right lot, but within the right confines of the lot.
Fred?
Yeah, I, I think that Jay just nailed it. Get what he just said and put that in this, and you've got something we can work with. Because number one, a surveyor can do one more, they know what drains and what doesn't by the, the topo of the elevations. So you're getting the best of both worlds, the architect can still be involved in it, but you have that surveyor, and I think that there ought to be one more stipulation. When they survey the actual elevation that the guy poured the floor out or set it, that needs to come back real quick because if it's lower or higher, that can change the whole game plan on some lots.
We, we require after this, this lab, the way we work in a lot of cities do that, several cities have gone to the fact that they require a survey of the form board before the lab's poured. So they know before the slab's poured what is, that it's going to be in the right spot.
Let this, let him take it back and work on it.
Yeah, because all this piecemeal is going to get-
Can we take it back and, and rework it?
You want to continue it to a time certain? Do you want to continue this to your next meeting?
Next meeting, right, team?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, next meeting, if that works for everybody.
So would you want to withdraw your motions and then-
Yes.
Would you continue it?
I think we should continue with the idea of the, what are there, two, three things we talked about? Two things.
At least, yeah, yeah.
The architect and this-
Final survey.
Final survey is the only thing, and everything else, we're sort of going with this. Okay, that would be fine with me.
Great, for the next meeting. Wonderful, thanks, great discussion. Thanks, everybody, very good discussion, important discussion. Derek? And now, and is there members of the public that are here that would like to speak on this issue, knowing that it's, okay, I don't think I see, oh, yes, Ben, thank you.
Ben Hurstson, so I, as a president of NHOA, I've lived through this, and I think the comments I've been hearing, it's the older communities. I can't tell you how much I had to work with the city, stew it. You have a first-floor elevation, part of the DO, ours is originally 17.2. In comes a builder towards the end, it's been 15 years building out just 77 homes, just think of that. So the last couple of years have been quite an experience, I'm not going to mention the name of the last builder for obvious reasons. So here's a requirement of 17.2. Homes are built and all of a sudden, we find out that several of the homes were considerably below 17.2. So we had to go and get a revision through South Florida Water Management District, working with the city, to adjust that 17.2, I think we went down to 16.9. The builder still had two homes, already built, that were below that. The engineers worked out a plan, they submitted it, the engineer for the builder, the engineer that we hired, from our, the original engineer on our development, they worked out a plan, it was approved, and then they still had two homes that were below. Guess what? Those two homes had to be torn down. That was because the city started to get involved, and you have Home A here, it's a 17-foot, then you got Home B over here, maybe it's just 16.9. Well, here's the situation, doesn't take a genius to figure out, that water has to go somewhere, it's going to go on the neighbor who had the older home. Something has to be done. I'm glad you're going to go back to the, you know, the drawing board a little bit. You've got to do something, especially for the older communities, it's really a serious, serious issue. So I'm glad, rather than jump on the civil engineer business, there's got to be somewhere in the middle, this gentleman, I think, that'll give a pretty good summary of what you really would be realistic. So I just want to say, thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts, Ben.
May I-
Other, other members of the public, yes?
I was just going to ask if we could move for recess for five minutes or-
Sure, why don't we take a recess? It's 10:53, why don't we have a recess till 11 o'clock? Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody. I hope you enjoyed the halftime show, we are back in session here. And, we are, Derek, where are we?
We are at an ordinance of the City of Benea Springs, Florida, amending the City of Benea Springs comprehensive plan as adopted by ordinance number zero-two-dash-sixteen as amended, considering the remaining state mandated amendments on the evaluation appraisal report, so as to amend the future land use element, coastal conservation management element, and the capital improvements element, to revise and update the remaining existing goals, objectives, and policies, and data analysis in accordance, in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter one sixty-three Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency, providing for conflicts, like conflicts clause and severability clause, and providing for an effective date and for all other purposes.
Great.
This is a public hearing, but I believe there's a preliminary issue that needs to be addressed.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. When this first occurred, and we have a couple of other city-initiated amendments on the horizon, we really wanted to have an accelerated timeline for this. Unfortunately, we do not have the D.E.O. State Land Planning Agency comments in yet. We were hopeful in order to advertise this and get this adopted that we would, but we do not, so we are requesting a continuance on to your December fourth meeting. However, to preserve the advertisement, we still have to have the public hearing. So, Dr. Bannon is here, I am here as well, if you have any questions.
Counsel?
So moved, move it to the fourth.
Okay, so moved in a second for discussion, Amy.
I just have, this is not particular to this, but I'm very concerned that we stay on our schedule to adopt the mandated requirements, amendments, and how does this all fit in? I, I think it says that we have to just do transportation, what's the, just review the schedule for that.
So this state mandated amendments, what it boils down to is that we can't process any additional city amendments or privately initiated amendments until the state mandated amendments are adopted and effective. So that's why we've really been trying to coordinate with the state and other agencies to get those comments in. Unfortunately, we just could not get them in today in order to actually hold the adoption hearing. So, December fourth is the earliest that we can go ahead and schedule and have the adoption.
How about the other element, I mean, this is the only one, this is not the last one, is it?
This is your state mandated, which included...
The transportation state mandated?
That is...
That is, so that's not held up by this, but everything after those two are held up until those two are adopted. So anything optional?
Yeah, I understand that, but I still don't, I just want the answer, when are we scheduled to finish this up?
The state mandated amendments will be scheduled now for December fourth for your adoption hearing.
And is that it, that includes the transportation?
It does not, your transportation is going to be part of what we call your optional amendment, so the presentation that Dr. Bannon gave you last, or last meeting will be scheduled for January.
It's not clear, it's, it's...
It's not relevant to this.
It was written here, you implied that this transportation was mandated, but it's not, so now, this is the last one we have to do, and then we'll be done?
Correct.
Okay, good, all right.
And I, thank you, Amy, for that, and I had a question, I, I want to, and we, you know, different context, different conversation, would be very curious to know what the state of Florida recommends, and what we're, if we're doing just what the state of Florida recommends, or if we're throwing in options B, C, and D, you know, so then you're looking us to fill in the oval down at E for all the above.
My staff is prepared.
So, state law, can we have a discussion on what the state law recommends?
Well...
Or do we want to do that at the next meeting?
No, no, I think Dr. Bannon's here to explain that, so that you can have meaningful discussion on these, these changes. But the, the part of this is, we had our report, and we had an order from the Division of Administrative Hearings to process our state mandated amendments, we prepared the amendments, transmitted them, we're still waiting from the state to say, "Yes, you've covered all the bases that we've asked you for, those were supposed to come in, they didn't come in for the holidays or some issue." And so now we're continuing the adoption till we get their comments, but we can, we can go through the...
And that's what the two-week delay's for.
Right.
So, certainly shouldn't be a vote on this in the least today.
Well, just to continue it.
Vote to continue it, period, and I want to have, be very clear, I want to know what the state law says versus the other shiny objects that we're looking at. Is that clear? Okay.
So is Dr. Bannon going to be here for the December one? Oh, so we don't, we, we can talk about that state, that issue now, or we can talk it in December? Okay.
What's your preference? Do we want to go over a review of what the state law says?
It's really up to you what, if you want to talk about it today.
Given the time and our other things...
We can hold it till the next meeting, I just want, you know, I'd ask staff for that, so I just, you know, this is our forum to talk, so just want to know what the state law says, period.
Well, and by that point, hopefully we'll have the state comments, and if they think we're doing something we're not supposed to, they can tell us then.
I'm fine with that.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you very much. Oh, yeah, there's been a motion to continue in a second to the first meeting in December. Further discussion, roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Duett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Great. And, and very briefly, just to go back to another item, to avoid having to re-advertise the stormwater, I know we talked about continuing it, but we didn't actually take a vote on it. If we could take a vote on it, then we'll save the city some money.
Okay. Second?
On the stormwater?
Yeah, to the December fourth.
Okay, motion in a second on the stormwater for December fourth. Further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Duett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
All right, and then public comment, Derek, and we're moving it to the next meeting, but still, if members of the public that would like to speak on this item that's being moved to December meeting, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, okay, Derek, what's next?
Next is just general public comment, and then I...
Okay, did, okay, public comment, members of the public that would like to speak on anything, please join us, welcome.
Anne Grundell, Executive Director, love in the name of Christ. Just as our twenty-plus churches united to repair seventy-six homes after Hurricane Irma, a medical debt forgiveness program has been initiated as another way for our local Christian churches to reach out to the community with the love of Christ. We discovered that over four thousand families in Lee County have over two-point-nine million dollars of medical debt in collection. In order to lift that burden, local churches have initially raised donations sufficient to forgive the medical debt of two-thousand-six-hundred-and-three local families. Although this announcement was made several weeks ago, due to the overwhelming response throughout the United States to participate in this debt forgiveness opportunity, letters to these initial Lee County recipients were delayed and finally mailed. to these initial Lee County recipients were delayed and finally mailed last week. Churches and individuals throughout southwest Florida continue to jump on board with the goal to forgive over $287,000 of medical debt in collections in 11 counties. This would affect over 20,000 southwest Florida families. The amazing thing is that $100 donation forgives $10,000 in debt, which is 100% return on donated funds. As many of us know, many families are swimming in medical debt, but even with just a minimal investment from people in our community, we can help lift this burden from our neighbors in need. The website to donate or for further information is ChristiansForSouthwestFlorida.com. We trust that you're encouraged and that God is honored by the way our churches are uniting this amazing outreach. We think this is a great Thanksgiving gift to our community.
Wonderful. Keep up the great work, Ann. Thank you so much. Hello, Kathy.
Good morning. How do you follow and act like that? Kathy McGrath for the record, and I want to say my personal thanks to Ann, their organization, and so many others that do so much to help the less fortunate. And now, on to something a little more pleasant. I touched on Holiday in the Park before, Tuesday the 3rd. We all know what a beautiful, warm and fuzzy event it is, with beautiful decorations and Santa Claus and things for the kids, and entertainment starts at 4:00, so please come. And again, remind all the businesses on Old 41 that there is a city-sponsored holiday lighting contest, and the people will be judging it the day before on Monday. So get out and decorate. And the other thing I want to bring up is, of course, the wonderful gala for the sixth annual Bonita Springs short field festival. It was...those of you that are there, it was wonderful, from the very beginning with the red carpet and the photos and the champagne and momentum, beer and appetizers, to the actual showing. And Antonio did a good job. He did 20-second snippets. We had 47 entries. He did 20-second snippets of every one of them, and then he did play all 13 finalists in their entirety. And the only one I'm going to mention, because I think he deserves a real recognition, is the young man, Evan Johnson, who won the best overall, the $1,000 sponsorship by Henderson Franklin Starnes, also won the People's Choice, and he did the same thing last year. People's Choice and the best overall. 17 years old, and as Antonio says, isn't it wonderful that we can highlight and have these up-and-coming people showcase their talents here in Bonita Springs? It's really wonderful. So the theme for next year is live, love, and play in Bonita. So start thinking, and thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. And thank you for everything you do for our community. Other members of the public? Greetings. Welcome.
Greetings.
David McCardle. I'm a principal at Bonita Grand Mine. And today, I know the City Council and the mayor are going to be considering our settlement agreement, and I want to thank you for considering it today. And I want to especially thank everybody that's been involved for the last six months. It's been a lot of give and take between us and the city, and, you know, and there's been a lot of work been put in by the staff, the city attorneys. Derek, in particular, has been, I know, very active with us. And I just want to thank also Mr. Theriak, that everybody's been involved. You, mayor, also, I know you've been involved in the mediation, and I just want to thank you for all this hard work to get us here today. I think the compromise, the settlement, is, I think, good for both parties. And I'm here today to answer any questions, and my staff is here, and I look forward to your decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here today. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none? City attorneys items. Derek?
Hey, I got a couple items for you today. The first one is something we sort of expected. We called for the referendum to have the charter amendments. I had asked at that time that if the supervisor elections office had any issues or clarifications when they sent it off for translation, that we'd have the ability to come back to you, and the ordinance provided for that. There was one word, that they...the hyphen did not jive with them and exceeded the 75-word requirement for the question. I have revised the question and as question number one regarding filling vacancies, which is...
So you had 76 characters?
76 words, because they...they considered it a double word, so it is now below that.
Technically, that's a typo, Rooney, right?
No, no, no. I used the exact same language as in the charter. So that, and then what...there was a typo, a missed period. So the only change before you that's really relevant is Charter Amendment 1, it's the question itself. The language of the amendments has not changed. We just reworded the question so we could take a few more words out of it. Okay?
Should...can we read it? Do you have it?
Sure, I have it.
Yeah, let's go ahead and read it, and...
The question will be, "Section 18 and 21 of the Charter shall be amended to clarify that in the event of a vacancy occurs on the City Council, a special election to fill the vacant seat will only be called if the vacancy occurs more than 180 days from an otherwise scheduled general election. In the event of vacancy in the office of mayor, the deputy mayor," there was a hyphen, "will serve as mayor until a new mayor is elected." Now is it?
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Some moved.
Second.
Been a motion to approve in a second? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Duett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Great. Thanks, Derek. What's next?
The next item is the aforementioned settlement with BG Mine. As recall, we came to a mediated settlement agreement. Since that time, we have been working to fine-tune that...those details. There's been some modifications in the proposal as was originally determined, but the current proposal, which would resolve all five lawsuits with BG Mine, would set the city on a course to approving up to 700 units in a residential plan development for the mine, the existing mine location when it gets completed. And then there would be, upon the completion of all those entitlements, what I'll just call the mine entitlements, there would be a transfer from the city of $4,989,000, and at which time, we would also get the deeds to 30 acres in the north part of the northern lake at the BG Mine site for a future regional park, as well as a blanket easement across the lake and conservation areas for public access, limited passive public access, so no water skis and things like that.
No what?
No water skiing or, you know...
Passive.
Passive uses, you know, ban shells. And we would get another 248 acres, which had been previously identified by the Water Management District in their southwest Florida feasibility study for restoration. We would work with the property owner there, which is the Bonita East 278, to remove the topsoil and a joint plan so that we could maximize the potential for creating a water quality project there. And in the most recent revisions to the settlement agreement, it would include a provision that they would use some of the topsoil that's being removed to create a three-foot berm around any lakes that result, so that we could also use the property for additional stormwater capacity. So that basically covers it. We will be on a process after, if this is approved, to start getting the entitlements put in place, at which time, once all the entitlements are completed, the properties will transfer to the city, payment will ensue, and then for those areas that are still going to have activities occurring in this, I'll call it a public-private partnership, we would issue licenses to control those activities, which property we would receive immediately. So I know it's complicated. The only other issue is, because we were making last-minute changes to bring the current state of the agreement, if there are any typos or scrivener's errors, as long as they don't affect the intent of the parties, we may want to make those modifications between the two parties and have that be ultimately what's signed. Some of what you see is illustrative, too. There's pictures without legal descriptions. Those legal descriptions, as provided in the agreement, can...will be updated as the entitlements come into place.
Counsel, are there any questions? Amy?
I just want to clarify that I understand your writing here, and the part where we're going to get 30 acres in the northern part of the BG Mine, and then we also get access to the other lake that's part of the residential community?
Correct. So, well, the...as you see on the map over there or in the exhibits, there are three major lakes when the project's built out. We're going to get an easement across that northern lake. Originally, as we had discussed in the mediated settlement, we were going to take title to everything. However, there are state environmental permitting issues, there's maintenance issues, there's going to likely be a homeowners association or possibly a community development district. I did not feel that I wanted the city restricted by those or even participating in a property owner's association. So instead, we decided to carve out the land that's just ours, and we will have an easement that gives us the same rights over those other areas.
It'll function the same way, and we don't have to own it and be responsible for all that stuff.
Correctly. Yeah, previously, we would have had a couple hundred acres coming to us. Now, we still have access to them. We're just getting 30 acres of actual usable upland.
I just want to be certain I understood it. Okay, I move to approve.
Counsel, any other questions?
Yeah, so on the 30 acres that we are getting, you do have language in there for environmental concerns, if there was anything that got spilled on it or buried there. Were held harmless on that?
And Mike, not to interrupt you, I'm just going to not hear that until questions are done. Then we can revisit the motion.
Okay.
Okay? But, Mike, I'm sorry, you have the floor.
I just want to make sure there was a second before we get into discussion.
Oh, well, I'd like to answer all questions before we make a motion on anything.
I'm trying to remember through all the documents at the moment. I'm sorry. I do not...although we have inspection rights on the 248 acres, I'm not sure that we had a provision in there regarding the 30 acres. But the property owners are here, and it looks...
We did, though. It's fine. One thing's true, whatever.
Okay.
We can put it in, just one second, Mike.
Okay.
David McCardle again for BG Mine.
That is no problem. It's part of that transfer, because there's going to be a sale of the 30 acres. I just always anticipated, because of his good work, there's going to be obviously the due diligence of looking at that, doing it environmental and all that to make sure that property is perfect. Perfect for you. And we know of nothing out there. You know, we've done the environmental for the whole property when we bought it a time ago. Okay? Thank you.
Fred, do you have any questions?
No, no, I was just going to say Mike's question was right on, because I was going to...
Okay, Laura?
Derek had raised that issue when we...
And there are provisions in the various attachments regarding that, but I...right now, there's been so many attachments, I don't want to say that I know for sure, but we'll put something in there if there's nothing specific to the 30 acres.
Double-check for typos. Greg, any questions?
Nope.
Amy? Okay, and then, okay, and I have no questions, so now, given all that, if we'd like somebody would...
Move to approve the settlement?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve in a second, the settlement. Is there any further questions? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Duett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye. Okay. Derek, what's next?
All right, the next thing on your agenda is authorization of a budget transfer and authorization for myself and the city manager to pay $6.3 million as part of the arbitration decision that was reached in the WCI Communities case. We were working towards, and we are hopefully still working towards, a final judgment that wraps up all the issues that may or may not have been clarified in that arbitration decision. However, if we are unable to do that, the city may be subject to a daily interest on that $6.3 million amount, because it was an award. So what I'm looking for is authorization to make that payment when it's due and appropriate.
Some moved. I make motion.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion in a second. Counsel, discussion. Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Duett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
I'm using Fred's voice tone.
Yeah, yes.
No, no one's enthused about it.
Next item.
The only other remaining item I have is, you recall back when we had the...it's not an agenda item, but when we had the card room come in for their approval, that...the card room came in for the approval, their project was in two phases. The second phase would have been the removal pursuant to that ordinance, the removal of the existing dog track site, the buildings. What they have come in since, they're coming in for permits now to build the card room. They would like to get credit for impact fees for taking...for the building that exists. We've sort of had a little back and forth with them, saying, well, even though the ordinance requires you to take it down, it hasn't been taken down, so we would treat it as a new building and subject to impact fees. So what Mr. Dolmer, myself, proposes, if you provide us a surety bond that says, in the event you don't take that building down after 18 months, we can take it down, we will treat it as if it's taken down today for impact fees, so that for their group isn't paying impact fees on a building that they otherwise plan on taking down. So...
Surety bond is for the amount of the impact fees?
The surety amount is the amount to tear down the building.
And how do you get the...
We would take it down. So we've got the construction estimates, we've delineated the areas. I'm just waiting for the signed agreement. I want authority from you to accept it when it comes in, and also want to let you know what was going on.
I make motion to do that.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second. Counsel, questions or further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Duett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Okay. That's it for me.
Derek, great job. Anything else? Miscellaneous?
All remaining bad news comes from Arlene.
Okay. Great, Arlene. City managers' items.
Yesterday, we had a site visit from the Department of Economic Opportunity, as well as representatives from FEMA with the program of the buyout program. It was a very positive meeting. We are anticipating that we will get a notice of award before Christmas. So we're excited about that opportunity. There will be more evaluation in forms with an actual grant contract sometime late spring, but we're continuing with the process. We have been informed that there will be a cap of the $5 million, so they will be working with us on evaluating each of the applicants we have, because we have more applicants than the $5 million allotment. But we have been informed that the request was below the 75, the original allocation from FEMA. So there will be a second round of applications available, and we anticipate reapplying for those. Also, I wanted to make you aware that the city's Historic Preservation Board had authorized previously a video to be done on the incorporation of the city. That video has been complete. At some point, the committee would like to work with the city council, setting a time to have an unveiling of that video in commemoration of the incorporation of the city was December 31, 1999. We're coming on to 2020 in order of that kind of celebration, and we'll work with the Special Events Committee, but wanted to make you aware that they had, under their program, worked towards that. And that's all I have for right now.
Okay. Fred?
A question. When do we think we'll be in the other round of FEMA grants for the elevating buildings, you know, with the $40,000 mortgage of low interest from SBA?
So those were individual applications from those property owners? We've not heard any...that had to be applied by the individual property owner with their insurance agency. I haven't heard back from any of those individual property owners. What we're working through is the ones that we're working in our program. What we're working through is the ones that were working in our program.
I just wondered if you had a clue when FEMA would be coming out with a, that round of the elevating.
We, we've not heard anything back on that.
Oh.
The re-elevating, the re-elevation.
Re-elevating, yeah, re-elevating.
We are continuing to get requests for additional information regarding our LMS projects, which include Pine Lake Preserve, the, the golf course community as well, as well as Logan Boulevard. So we're continuing that process.
Matt, anything to add at all with that, or?
All of those projects that Arlene just, just mentioned, we, we're getting favorable indications on and probably at the first of the year or maybe sooner, we'll be coming forward with some funding agreements.
Counsel, anything else? Greg?
Nope.
Okay. Yes, Laura.
Something. At the zoning meeting, discussion came up about if city, if the city of Benita could consider shifting its policies toward renting apartments in, next to your home. Matt, maybe you could summarize, remember the discussion they were having about allowing?
I wasn't in the.
Which meeting was it?
Oh, it was John. Was it John? Zone, yeah, it was John, okay. I'll bring it up another time. It's just sort of like in-law suites.
Yeah.
They're becoming.
I remember that coming up in, in the past, was it being able to rent out in-law suites, something like that.
Right, so it was just something that.
Like a cabana house, right, or type thing?
Accessory dwelling units.
Accessory dwelling, we have that, don't we?
We have major restrictions on it, so I don't know. We'll, I'll bring it up with a green sheet and.
Is this relating to what's called short-term or vacation rentals?
No.
No, it's for.
No, this would be like.
Year-round.
But if we can load up those questions, yeah, for the, for the next time or the next, yeah, yeah, definitely.
I'll get it.
That's fantastic. Okay, anything else? Okay, Amy, did you have?
Are we on the council member items?
Well, okay, as long as they're done, great job, okay. We're going to move on to mayor and council member items. Amy.
I have quite a few things to report, but I'll try to summarize.
No, take your time.
To say that I did have a meeting with our new Lee County Council Commissioner, Ray Sandelli, and to start a relationship, which we have discussed, we all need to do outreach, so this was my outreach to him. And it was, the, the things that I mentioned to him were, were our focus on stormwater management. And I did reinforce the idea that both the Lee County study and our own in-house study had focused on the Spring Creek project, which we have requirements of grants requests in to have some help with that. And he seemed to be interested in that. He didn't seem to, he wasn't aware of it, but he's new. But I just wanted to emphasize that this is both of interest to Lee County and to us, and we said we might need some help in the future, so that might be positive. The second thing is that I also mentioned to him about our effort with the South Florida Water Management effort and that there were due approaches, the one that you had, and that the, the Lee County Commissioning staff is also helping us to advocate for our movement to the Big Cypress. Again, to just reinforce the effort that was made by other people. And the, the third thing that I mentioned was the work that's been done on Sun Trail. And he's a biker and he didn't, he wasn't, I don't think, aware of the effort that we've made there. And that recently, the MPO just put four hundred thousand dollars into planning. So, and I did emphasize the fact that this is a project that's not really a city project even, or an estero project. It's something that the Lee County is gonna, if we're ever going to go through with it, they have to participate in it in a big way, the way Sarasota County did. So I thought that, that we, that by those little conversations, it would help to advance some of the things that we would be interested in. So that was the first meeting that I had. I also want to mention, as some of us did, that, that I did attend the Warrior Fire Service baseball game, and I really am sorry about you guys. I left when the, I shouldn't mention the score.
It's okay, it's okay.
Because I had.
They're professionals.
I had another meeting. It was twenty.
It only counts as one loss, right?
Twenty-seven to ten when I left. But I have to say that I am proud of myself because I did pitch out a ball and I went, I got it across home plate and I even, they even gave me the ball.
In the strike zone?
Well, they, they called, they called it a strike, but it went over hot, uh, home plate, so I think that was pretty good.
That's a strike.
So I did, you were proud by representing them. And so that was kind of fun for me. But I also went to the ribbon cutting, which occurred right before that thing. And, and the renovated baseball field is just wonderful and, and I hope we continue to enhance those facilities. And I did talk to Nicole and she has some plans in there. And I'm grateful for the effort that was done by the Minnesota Twins to give us the grant. But it was, it was a good day in many ways, so thank you for letting me sit in for you, Mayor.
Thank you for doing it, very much, thank you.
It was fun, honestly. I'll bring the ball next time. It's all signed and everything. But, and you guys better practice, you know. I want to say that I was approached by Deb Logan, who's, I think she's the director of the Blue Zones there, and she asked if I would sit in on the steering committee, which means about four times a year. They don't really, it's just to, to advance communication. We don't do anything there but other than know what they're doing and, and, and as a representative of the, the city, if some, I'd be willing to do it, but if somebody wants to do it, it's, it's good. But I said that I would go to the first meeting in January to figure out what they're, what they're asking. But we, we could bring it up if we wanted to. I also attended the Horizon Council meeting, which was the time that I had to join you all on the telephone. And that was an all-day meeting and that was a steering committee meeting. And there again, sometimes when I go to these meetings, I think it gives me an opportunity to talk to other people like Cecil Prendergast and, and also the assistant Lee County managers. And I again reinforced the things that are our objectives, like the, what we're doing for water. I inquired about the six hundred million dollars that was voted in by the Lee County Commission for water quality testing, which parallels in some ways that thirty-seven thousand that we're doing in-house. And I asked if we could figure out if there was some kind of cohesiveness or, you know, because they're doing it through Lee County and we're doing our own and how, once we get the information, how we could work together. And I think that's something that staff can work on in the future. And just to mention that I think Cecil Prendergast seemed to be new about the fact that we were going to put our Imperial Commons, is that the right word? Out on the RFP in January, so they're sort of watching what we're doing, seem interested in that. And he also was interested in what we were doing with the stormwater management. And I again reinforced the idea that we have this Spring Creek project that we're, that we need some help with, even though we, we have advanced some money there. And I, let me see, I think that's all that I did there. I think I'm all done here, thank God, huh? Oh, wait, Art and Pep Public Places, they've gotten a lot of positive feedback by the sculpture that we have in the front and they're looking into buying another project, another sculpture, and they're moving around some of the sculptures. You'll see some changes there. And we're, we're thinking about making some improvements to this, the River Park, which is going to be a, a sculpture park, so that's it.
Great, great work, Amy. Thank you very, very much. Fred.
Wanted to give you a little report on the Florida Lega Cities. There, there's a couple of things. Number one, in the current legislative session, this is a good thing. There's a bill that sponsored, uh, the Senate and the House to basically do a good, realistic assessment of what each of the categories of water cost has been underfunded for years and years. And in fact, Rebecca O'Hare from the Lega sent a email kind of summarizing up some preliminary, I call it guesstimates, of what, how far we are behind in some of these things. That'll be shared with counsel. I sent it to Arlene and Debbie and asked them to get it out to y'all. The other thing that's going to be hot topic again is vacation rentals and allowing the state to regulate it versus the individual community. So that's another big hot button, big, big thing. And there will be a number of issues again filed, that are filed, that take away the rights of the cities to, to regulate.
Great, thank you, Fred.
On the rentals, was the Lega Cities in favor of it being cooperative?
No, no, we're.
We were against.
The Lega is, they, they're against it, yeah, but, but the thing is, it's, it's been brought up every year for about five, six years. And each year, it gets a little closer to passing, so it's not good.
That's one of the things we, we work against.
And if we want to work on it, there's more support in the Senate to kill it. The House is more in favor of dereg, or taking our rights away from us on that thing.
Okay, great, great work, Fred, thanks. Mike?
Just thanks for your trust in me to be deputy mayor.
It was a hard decision.
Congratulations, Fred. Thanks for all your great work.
Well, John, John is here, so he can just fill in.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely.
So we can all be geared up.
Here.
Johnny.
Hello again.
Hello there.
At our zoning board hearing yesterday, they began a discussion dealing with accessory dwelling units and also the possibility that communities are going towards allowing these to go in different areas. The purpose of dealing with children that don't leave home and with parents that don't, that come back home, I guess. And so the zoning board chairman, under his authority, has formed a subcommittee to examine the topic and to bring this idea to you for your deliberation. But the idea would be, under certain circumstances, you would allow for accessory dwelling units to, to take place right now. It's very difficult in the city to do that, mainly because we've looked at doing cluster-type development. We've also looked at how we calculate density under older comprehensive plan designations. This would be a way to kind of find a path forward through those obstacles so that it could happen. Obviously, there's things we need to discuss so that they, it's not abused. Also, something to, to identify this is not going to supersede any homeowner association requirements or regulations. So just wanted to bring it to your attention, so you're under the same understanding that the zoning board is. But at this point, there really isn't anything to discuss, other than the fact that they want to bring this to you at some point in the future.
Okay, great. Laura, did you have?
No, no, that was it, and they didn't want to be stepping on toes.
Right, right, right. Do you have any other items, Laura?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I have, and I think you've seen this, some of, you know, we have, about six weeks ago, we had our first town hall, water town hall meeting here in Benita Springs. Well, the second meeting, the second stop of the tour, which by the way is going to expand and we're going to, the goal is to get to all eight water districts in the state of Florida. So our second stop on the tour, so to speak, the bands together, and that will be with Chairman Chauncey Goss from South Florida Water Management District, Dr. Mike Parsons from the FGC Water School, and Sanibel Mayor Kevin Ruane will be on the water panel. It will be moderated by Naples Mayor Bill Barnett. It will be this Friday night from four to five-thirty at Naples City Hall. And I just wanted to bring it up and get a nod to the head. If anybody had any problems with us sending that out electronically to the city email list to make them aware of it.
No, it's fine, things are great.
Is that okay? All right, Laura, hit, hit send. No, thank you very much for that. Amy, you had mentioned some sun trails, and I just want to mention this. It's got a million miles to go, but there has been a discussion about potentially a trolley, a train, a trolley, a tram. Don't know at this point, between downtown Benita Springs and Coconut Point. Spoke with CSX Railroad on another issue, led to a discussion on this. So we're gonna, I think, just kind of put our toe in the water with that, meaning bike trails would be involved with that. Like I said, and I would love your input, love, love your help, so ever we don't get in trouble on sunshine.
Quite a few people are involved, I mean, I'm, I'm just getting involved with that. But there has been a discussion of not just totally looking at it from a bike to trail, but maintaining the ability to put something along the rails, you know? So that's part of the discussion, but we're a long way.
Oh, like I said, I know, so it's, it's, you know, we won it yesterday, however.
There's a lot of people, I mean, we're talking years, it's long past the time we're going to be on the council. But I think it would be helpful if we, well, this is the planning. We, we have money for the planning, so we'll see what comes out of that.
Right.
And.
Maybe it's a private, private thing.
Well.
I always say private, public. This might be a private, private thing.
And it can't be our project, I mean, it can't, we just don't have the money. It's just incre, if you think of what they did on the legacy trail up at Sarasota, I mean, I think it was forty million dollars, you know, and it's not even that far. There's a, something called a Paradise Trail that they, they're trying to get in Naples that, you know, is also that. So there's, we have a lot of work to do, and any ideas are welcome.
One shovel at a time, right? One step at a time, yes.
This is just to get our, we don't want our ideas not counted, so we have to have some input here.
That's absolutely right, but just so you know, I've been approached by some people and have had some discussions, so this is our forum to talk, so we're talking, but absolutely, and please.
I think we should have these conversations about what's going, that's why we have these member items that are brought up, so that if anybody's had input, if you talk to anybody, we should say the same thing as.
Absolutely.
Much as we can.
Right.
If we don't talk about it, we don't want to say.
Right, no, absolutely.
I have a list, when I go to a meeting, I make a list of what I'm going to say, and I try to parallel what I think I've heard in the council, even though we haven't had robust discussions on some of these things. And I hope that everybody else does the same thing.
Right. Absolutely, no, thank you, Amy, very much. And there is an item here, Nicole Perino and I were going to go out to the soccer fields today, but she's not feeling well, so I told her to get some rest and we'll reschedule. There's been a discussion, a meeting at least, I should say, about potentially a fence at Marnie Field, which would kind of give it some symmetry, would give it some organization, if you will, would give it something for the soccer fields, potentially advertising, looking towards the soccer fields. I made it clear that I didn't even want to advance a discussion if, if they were thinking there was going to be advertising that you could see as you're driving by on seventy-five. That was a non-starter for me. With those fears alleviated with Florida Power and Light and the easements and all the, everything going on down there, environmental issues, don't know, but just want to know that's something that, talking about, there again? Talk, one step at a time, one shovel full at a time. And I, like I said, I don't know the answer yet, but I'm just being very clear with everybody that it's something else I'm looking into. Yeah, no, I know, I mean, I don't know, I don't know, Matt, I wouldn't want to throw it in your court to handicap it, but with the easements and with the power lines, do you have any thoughts down there? And like I said, Nicole and I were going to go out there today, but.
I, I haven't seen the available space, and I know that's why she wanted to meet with you, because I think it's fairly marginal, but I haven't had a chance to take a look.
It's a second fence because there isn't an ability to address the first fence. It's not our.
Right.
It's our fence or property there, so it has to look at where an easement could fit for a second fence.
Right, right, okay, that's great. And if I could take an editorial note for just one second. The Bishop Row Football Vikings are in the Elite Eight. They have a home game Friday night at seven-thirty for a trip to the Final Four at stake, so. Number seventy-seven, Petey Simmons, co-captain junior, six-three, two-sixty. If you want to come out and support, just let me know. It's not on TV, but it will be game of the week probably on ESPN radio, so, local.
Is there a tailgate party in Hall?
Well, you know, it is, it is a Catholic school, Fred, so we'll. No. Communion, but anyway, thank you very much for that. Any other council member items? Greg?
I do have a couple things. One, I just want to reiterate Amy, what she said about the wounded warrior softball game. It was a very good time. The Veterans Day afterward was very good. I do have some other news that I need to tell the council about today. Kind of sad for me, very sad for me, but sometimes from sad things comes good things. Chief Daigle has decided to oblige retire at the fire department. He's going to be retiring as of April first. He put that out. With that, I need to concentrate more on what I'm doing at the fire department for, for my future possibly. So I am resigning from city council. I've spoken to Derek and to Arlene about it. I believe I can stay on until the election because if something does happen, if I do get appointed, nothing's final yet as my future at the fire department, but I feel I need to concentrate solely on that. The chief does have some vacation time that he is going to take, so I will be, you know, having to do more responsibility there. It's a very sad day for me. I wanted to finish out my term and make that decision in November if I was going to rerun. I've had a fabulous time here, met lots of people. There's no way I can ever repay what the city has given to me, the, the connections, the, the fun, the dialogue. The mayor and I have spoke about this, you know, even if we disagree, we're still friends at the end of the day. And I think that goes for everybody on this council and the way I feel about them. I feel, you know, at the fire department, we throw the word family and brotherhood around. I, I feel the same way about this council and even with Steven Slakka, who was here, and Peter O'Flynn. So it's a sad day for me. I don't, I don't really like it, but it's something I have to do for my future. And I want to thank everybody here, staff, from Community Development to Parks and Recs, to everybody. You guys have been nothing but professional and nice and open arms. And anytime we had any, I've had any questions or concerns, you guys have always been there to help. And members of the public, and same thing with District Two, I'm going to misrepresent them. And, you know, I've been through a few things before, and you know what, this, for me, this isn't goodbye. This is just until next time, all right? Thank you, Mr..
Thank you, Greg, and Buddy, I guess I'll, I'll jump in here. It's when we had the discussion, and you know me, like I normally do, first thing that came into my head, I said to you, right? I didn't, but I say that affectionately, and my example to you was, Greg, thank you for your service and congratulations. When Congressman Ford was called by President Nixon to assume the vice presidency, he was no longer allowed to be a congressman. You're advancing in life, you are mov, you have worked your entire life for this day and for this opportunity. I congratulate you in every way there. I congratulate you in every way there is to congratulate you, I will miss you in every way there is to miss you, and your service here was exemplary, I love you like a brother, we're gonna miss you, but in every sense of every fiber in my body, congratulations, chief-to-be.
So...
Love you, buddy.
Thank you.
Dito, everything the mayor said.
You said that very well, Mayor.
Oh, and Amy, I want to thank you for all the work you do, too, wow.
I've been busy this one.
Yes.
No, well, let me just finish what I'm saying about Greg, because I have something to follow up with your comment, is that I sort of reacted the same way. I, I told him that I was just so happy for him, but so sad for us, you know, and that we really miss him, and that I appreciate every effort that he's made to make this a successful council, and to make Benita the best it could be. I respect him in every way, and, and I said, the only good thing about this is that now I can call you and discuss these issues. So I hope that the conversation is, well, I know it's gonna be...
You're gone.
When you're gone, so I have to wait until, what is it, March what, 20?
March, so...
When, when is the, but in, late March, when I call you and ask you to comment on certain issue, I will, I will really appreciate your advice, and I, and I will continue to do that, so you're not totally free of us yet, but again, thank you for your service.
And just real quick, on, on the mechanics of that operation, we've contacted supervisor elections, you already had both the charter amendments and the District Four special election on for March 17th. I have prepared a resolution, as we're talking, to add District Two to that, so that that district can have a transition plan as well, and if, if, if your support, if the council's supportive of that, a motion to adopt such...
And that's the right to serve, Derek, is that...
No, it's not, it's not, it's just allowing District Two to go also on the election for the 17th.
Understood, but, but his ability to serve up to Election Day.
He can, he can, he can serve until he is appointed into the new position, so if, if the chief leaves on January 1st, then he has, his resignation has to be effective January 1st. Right now, it's, it's an open question whether he's even going to be able to get the appointment, but from talking with Councilwoman DeWitt, the real issue is, he's gonna be taking over additional responsibilities either way, so, so getting this out there and allowing us to, to set the election...
Well, that, in any way, shape, form, or manner that we could have Greg serve until Election Day, believe me, I would wholeheartedly endorse that, as I think the entire council would.
Do we have to make a motion to do that?
Just authorize the mayor to sign a resolution adding District Two to the March 17th date.
Is that okay?
So moved?
Well, selfishly, regrettably, but congratulatory to our new chief, I will sign.
I'll call you on March 18th.
(laughing) That's the same page.
Congratulations, Greg, and Derek?
Can do a roll, a roll call on that.
Okay, so I will make that motion, that I will sign that paper selfishly, regrettably, congratulatory to our chief-to-be, how's that? Can we add that somehow?
(laughing) It's too long.
I know, okay, but I'll make that motion. Who wants to second it?
No hyphens.
And no hyphens and no typos. Okay, there's been a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
No.
(laughing).
There you go. Love the spirit.
Staff, we'd like to thank the supervisor's elections for working with us, we contacted them, we're a little bit past the deadline, but they were immediate to help us with moving this forward.
All right, don't push it up to 75 characters, Rooney, and then have a typo, and then have to come back to us on something. All right, no, no, Greg, you know, I could go on all day, but I know we have other things to do, but from a kid, from a hometown kid, a hometown boy, to realize his dream, you know?
That's great.
I, I won't talk about it, 'cause I will get emotional. Congratulations, my friends, in every sense of the being, congratulations. Okay, um, anything else, council, before we approve the minutes? Yeah, Amy?
I just want to follow up on Laura's comment, because I do think that with all these changes that we're having in the council, that we probably should review what we want to focus in on, you know, I'm, I've been taken up some of the slack that Deputy Mayor O'Flynn has left, just because I knew the people he was talking to, that's how, and I, and I like what I'm doing, I mean, and being introduced to, but I think it would be helpful for us to have like a restructuring understanding, and maybe, I think we're having, when is our budget meeting?
We're gonna be reaching out to all of you to see if we can schedule it for our second meeting in December, that, it's a day meeting, the second meeting in December, and what we could do is bring forward the itemized list of where each council member is the liaison, so you can review that, and where we have vacancies, you can review that as well.
And then, of course, when we get the new people in, you know, it will have to be restructured again, so I don't know if we should wait, we could at least start to think about it.
We could start to look at it, and then you, we always bring it back after...
Bring it back in March, after we get the, the new additions, you know.
Okay. Anything else, council? Greg, anything else?
No, thank you very much for all the kind words, I'm gonna miss it.
I'm delaying. It's 11:59, I don't know what noon means to me, but I am delaying, okay? All right, approval of the minutes for November 6th and November 12th.
So moved.
And a motion to accept in the second? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay, public comment, members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. And it is noon. No, no, I just, no, no, I didn't want this meeting to end until afternoon, somehow on Greg's behalf, I, I don't know, that's just me.
So many things have happened in the last 15 minutes, I don't know where to start, but I won't take a lot of time. Number one, I guess I'll start with you, Greg, well, you know, that's the name of the game, you advance and move onward and upward, so congratulations, but we will miss you on that seat there. And Mayor Peter, no one can ever say that you're at a loss for words, no matter what you do. And Petey, what did you say, six foot three, two hundred?
260.
That's not the little Petey I remember.
No.
Oh, my God.
Where's it coming from?
I don't know.
Hard work and dedication.
New Hampshire?
Yeah, no.
I think he's gonna come in.
I'm the runt of the family.
And Amy, you did a great job at the Wounded Warriors games, and I'll tell you, if anyone has ever missed those games next year ago, because the Louisville sluggers, they're amazing what they can do, and I won't mention what the score was at one point, at least narrowed it down a little bit, and you know, I have, I can't, I'm gonna have to paraphrase, it's a shirt I bought a couple of years ago, and I believe it says, "The capabilities of a limbless person are limitless," and boy, those, they, they, they prove it, they, they were just absolutely wonderful. And the last thing I want to comment on, and I know this is way in the future, you're talking about the development where the mine property is, where in the future, and something was mentioned about passive recreational, and I know this is way, way in the future, but something to consider, of course, the wording should be, no combustible engines, I mean, everyone can use the water, and the other thing is, and I will bring in the brochures, again, this is in the future, just something to consider, I don't know how many acres are available for conservation, there's an area in West Palm Beach called the Wacoda Latchy Hatchy Wetlands, and they took some excess land, and they end up making a, I won't say a bird sanctuary, but wait, it attracts waiting birds, and they've, they have, I mean, they've